convening the Board of Supervisors regular meeting for September 1st, 2021. And I would like to reconvene the recessed public hearing due to the ad in the paper that was mistakenly incorrect, and we'll reconvene at the point basically that we were, which is discussion. I believe Michelle is online, but it's not necessary to go over.
Well, you still might, we should provide the public an opportunity to provide input, which they did at the last meeting as well. And I do want to clarify and confirm that this is the public hearing for special exception 20-12-01 for VDOTs and Co. Brewing LLC on tax map 38A-1-6B.
So we are at the public hearing portion. Anyone wishing to speak in the courtroom, please raise your hand. When you come up, please give us your name and your district. And then we'll move on to anyone that's on Zoom that would like to speak as well.
She is.
Anyone in the courtroom? Not seeing any hands. So we'll move to Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you would like to speak to the reconvened recessed public hearing for VDOTs and Company Brewing, please raise your hand. No? Not seeing any hands raised. And there's none in the courtroom. I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting. And open it up to the board for discussion.
And I do want to say, Ms. Summers is connected via Zoom. If you have any questions for her. And I want to reiterate that special exceptions pursuant to Rep. Hennick County Code 17047-G, special permit or special exception is only, will only be granted if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of Article 6 of your Chapter 170 zoning and the proposed uses otherwise lawfully permitted. The burden is on the applicant to satisfy such requirements. In this case, the applicant submitted a number of documents, including site plan. Those are all attached to the record. I believe Mr. Goff was going to reference quickly Rep. Hennick County Code, Section 17052, just to make sure the board was aware of what it states. And I do have that available to pull up for your discussion.
Yes, and also 17047's subsection C, which does allow you to attach conditions to the issuance of a permit. And then to reiterate something that all of you already know, but I think is worth saying on the record, that the general standards that are contained in 170-52 should be considered, each and every one of them, as they are applicable to the details of this application. Each and every one of them should be considered by each of you before making your decision. You should, of course, if you are personally one or the other, that's something important. As far as those general standards, if you would be stated for the record, those will be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Ms. Smith, do you want to start?
Did we hear from the applicant last time? For some reason, I'm thinking the applicant deferred to this meeting to make a statement.
I think we did hear some from the applicant, but the floor is open. I think Robert knows how to slide.
Maxed out again. Here we go. All right. Well, thank you this evening for the opportunity to do this correctly. Dot the i's, cross the t's. Just to, some background history, this past January 2020, we submitted application, myself, Robert Chapman, the property owner. And I'm joined tonight with the brewers, VDOTs and Company. We've been working very closely. And with the planning commission, this past January, over eight months, we came up with a plan to provide parking, to provide access egress, to provide a dedicated parking lot for this brewery use. And the planning commission voted unanimously, almost unanimously, to move this forward to the board. So I understand that the planning commission's request was to move it forward with a yes. And they added some conditions, which I believe are fair, an annual reassessment to look at how the parking and traffic is working along 211 there. And so what I would kind of like to highlight is that VDOT's approval is required in this process, as are yours. But VDOT's language, if you read in the letters back and forth of VDOT, the language that they're using is detail oriented, so as to speak to turning radius of the parking lot, the number of entrances. VDOT is not worried about sightlines, for one. The sightlines in both directions are adequate in their mind. VDOT's not worried about the entrance to Main Street with its relation to the proposed brewery and its parking lot. They're more kind of dialing in on really detailed things, which kind of leads us to believe that we're moving in the right direction with a VDOT. Certainly, if VDOT doesn't sign off on this, it doesn't happen. If you don't sign off on it tonight, it doesn't, doesn't happen. So another point, you've heard from all of the abutting property owners, they're all in favor of this. I believe their letters and emails are posted on board docs. The planning commission asked us to build the largest single-use parking lot in all of Sperryville. The largest single-use parking lot in all of Sperryville to accommodate this 20-hour use, which in this, in the Highway Commercial zoning district, we could go with something much more intensive, right? A food and beverage establishment, 40, 50 hours a week would be a much more intensive use. And that wouldn't have to be here, right? But we're here. We're talking about this. This is happening because it's a brewery. And the planning commission capped that at 20 hours. So, you know, we worked with RACI Engineering in Luray. They came up with a parking lot design, an engineered design, which we've submitted to VDOT at great expense, I might add. And so I'm hopeful that you can take into account the fact that we're building a parking lot. We're actually tearing down a building, an existing building, to build a parking lot for this 20-hour-a-week use. And to contextualize this with the other breweries in Sperryville, this is an Anno Brewery. This is in line with Hopkins Ordinary. And Hopkins Ordinary shares a parking lot with B&amp;B. And so, you know, we have 21 spaces dedicated for customer use, with another three or four spaces for employee use. So we think this is a good application. Think this is a good use. Mrs. Smith has been working diligently with VDOT to try to get speeds lowered on 211. This is one way that's accomplished through, you know, adaptively reusing these properties and getting some activity there. You know, that slows traffic down. That's what we're worried about. I think we're on the same page. We'd love to have the speed lowered there. That's how this happens, right? So I hope that you can take into account everything that's been produced over the past eight months, the neighbors that are in favor of this, and approve this application. Thanks.
I want to bring to board members' attention the staff report, which does list the planning commission recommendations. It also lists some staff recommended conditions that are slightly different than those planning commission recommendations, in part to expand, for example, the planning commission's condition is no buses. And a parallel from staff would be buses shall not stop to pick up or drop off patrons on the permitted parcel or within the 211 public right of way. So we need to be clear in these conditions. The other is, and Mr. Chapman mentioned, the annual review. And staff believes that's problematic from the special exception process.
It is problematic.
There's really not a process to do that. And we do not carry such a condition in our recommendation. So we would recommend that if the board is of a mind to approve this with conditions, that those conditions be placed in such a way that you're comfortable with the use for the foreseeable future. This applicant will have to make considerable capital investment in the parcel. So it's really not appropriate to have a short-term approval period linked to such a, such a use. If you did that, I suspect the applicant wouldn't, wouldn't do the project.
Mr. Curry, should we, should we be reading the staff recommended conditions as superseding those that came out of the planning commission?
Yes, yes.
So they should be viewed as replacing what?
Well, I just want to be clear. The planning commission has recommendations. And so the staff, in reading those, have clarified. They're not additive. They're not a place.
That's what I want to make sure.
We certainly don't replace our judgment for that of the planning commission or the board, but we think they're clear in intent.
I just wanted to know how to read this. Okay.
I did too. Just want to get clarification. My recollection from hearing this application when it was before the planning commission, and from the documentation that's still in the packet, is this is a 24/7 production facility in addition to being open 20 hours a week for consumption. Is that correct? Okay. So there will be, I mean, there is a production element to it in addition to just onsite. That's what I was getting at.
Staff picked that up in condition seven. The use shall be open to the public maximum of 20 hours per week.
I don't know where's a good point for me to ask my questions, but some of them have to deal with the staff report.
I would say, go ahead.
All right. Well, the staff report lists the property as being in a floodplain, but the FEMA maps show that the property is entirely within a floodway.
It is, in fact, in a floodway. And the, the map is attached. The red-blue hatching designates that. And the applicant will have to deal with those floodplain ordinances as they relate to that.
But your question, your question was semantics, floodway versus floodplain, right?
No.
Floodway is in the floodplain. It's a more specific designation.
Mine's not so much semantics. Mine is, well, because of semantics, it may not be properly identified as far as our concerns are. But I see that it, according to the elevations, it falls below the 710-foot flood, flood level. So that means it is, it's, what's the word I'm looking for here? It falls under the requirements of these FEMA maps and FEMA guidelines. And I'm just wondering if, you know, Mr. Whitson, if you, as a representative on the planning commission for the Board of Supervisors, if you could summarize the discussion that the planning commission had about enlarging a use within a floodway.
We had, we had no discussion. My recollection is we had no discussion of, of the floodway.
No one had any concerns about this property being, the use being increased in a floodway?
Not that I recall, no.
And I, obviously, a building permit will have to be filed and meet these requirements. However, as Mr. Chapman noted, they are taking down a large structure and replacing the flat parking lot. And generally, the floodway ordinance has restrictions on building, constructing items in the floodway that could raise the, back up the floodwater and raise the flood height more than a foot. Removing that large structure, they will have to provide the engineering analysis to identify that, in fact, probably improves the situation by removing the large building. Now, relative to the floodplain, they will have to meet the requirements of the building code and the floodplain ordinance for the building. And that may be relative to where mechanical equipment is, relative to the flood height and all those things. But before you today is the zoning and whether it's appropriate in that spot.
If you will, sir, the way I, I read 170-45, the floodplain overlay district, we and our staff are supposed to make sure that all these things are met. I don't know how we're going to do that after we would issue a permit, a special permit.
Because they require zoning permits and building permits.
Right. It's a building permit question.
Yeah.
We haven't been real good with that historically. And I want to...
Sorry, Mr. Chapman wanted to add.
Right now, I'm talking to the board, if you will.
Yeah. Well, I, I can't speak to the past. Obviously, we just readopted our floodplain ordinance. And my direction to staff was very clear that we are delivering that floodplain ordinance as written, as recently adopted by the board. I know that came to bear on a home down 231, or a structure down 231 not too long ago. And that's how we're proceeding. The law is the law, and that's how we apply it. So if they're unable to meet the requirements of the floodplain ordinance, then the zoning approval won't help them at all.
Well, how will this board know that we've met those requirements?
I guess you do that through hiring proper staff.
But right now, this board is tasked with the, with the requirement of, during this public hearing process, we either approve or disapprove the application in front of us. And we don't have all that information that I believe is pertinent.
You will certainly have to consider this however you think is appropriate. I would just add that many uses up and down this stretch, the floodway within the Highway Commercial District, don't require a special permit, a special use permit, would never come before the board. Staff has to deal with those day in and day out. This, in my mind, is no different. We will continue to handle the requirements of the building code, zoning code, including the floodplain ordinance, whether it's a special exception or not.
All that being what it is, we still are being asked to approve a greater use in a floodway without the information that's, that's required. You're saying that that's going to come later.
I respectfully disagree that you have two buildings reducing to one building. But yes, that information, when they get their permits.
It's an increased use, though. Right now, those buildings have been vacant for a long time. They no longer have a grandfathered use.
The application is before you. I'm happy to answer questions.
See, when, when I say something and it disagrees with your, your point, then you have, you say it's before us. But my, my point is, these buildings, the use, the prior use, any prior use is no longer grandfathered because they've been vacant more than two years, right? So now we're talking about an increased usage in a floodway. And we're saying, let's get that information later after we make a decision to approve something or not.
This is not a vested use issue. That's why they're before you for a zoning permit. I'm just explaining the process as it works with your ordinance. And I assume each board member will take that into account in deciding whether this special exception is appropriate.
But if I hadn't asked the question, it wouldn't have been taken into account because the planning commission and staff didn't, didn't work on this. Am I correct?
No.
The floor, Mr. Whitson. I'm asking a question.
I said staff will take into account in issuing zoning permits and building permits.
Well, this board needed to know some of this information. And as up until this point, it had not been addressed. Am I correct?
We're looking at the floodway overlay in the staff report.
But there's very little information there. All we have is the height as measured by a civil engineer. And this property is below the maximum flood height.
It seems similar to the VDOT situation, where you have to approve it for them to be able to even vote on it or make a decision.
How can we approve a use someplace that may not be a proper place to put that if we don't have all the information?
May I?
Yes, sir.
The planning commission, with all due respect, Mr. Fraser, I think did a very thorough job. And I think the applicants did a very thorough job of responding to our requests. It's my understanding that any questions of, of meeting whatever requirements are in county code relevant or related to location of floodplain are building permit questions. And I would respectfully state that this is, we are making a zoning decision on a special exception permit for a brewery in a highway commercial zone. And that, that separate question of floodplain, I appreciate you raising it. But I don't, I don't think any, any member of the planning commission, including some who've sat there for 20 years plus, thought it was in the purview of the planning commission to consider it, given that it's ultimately a building permit question. So.
If I can address that, I don't, I don't think that my little bit of experience should be overlooked on this. If y'all didn't address 17045, the floodplain overlay district, which is part of the zoning ordinance, then I don't think the planning commission addressed it. Because this is not building code related. This is zoning related. It's in the zoning ordinance, not in the building code. So your answer to my question is inappropriate because it doesn't even fit. This is the zoning ordinance we're talking about, not a building code violation. We're talking about a zoning ordinance, zoning maps, floodplain overlay. We're talking about FEMA flood maps. We're not talking about building code, sir. And if the, if the planning commission, with all its vast experience and knowledge, did not even ask a question about that, then I, I beg to differ with you, sir. You did not do your job properly. And I, I have to complain one more time yet that we get to this level of a meeting and find out that we don't have the necessary information because somebody didn't want to do their job.
Okay.
That's not fair to the applicants. It's not fair to the applicants. It's not fair to the public that are nearby, the nearby residents.
Mr. Fraser, would you mind if I allow Mr. Chapman to make the comment that he wanted to make?
I, I guess, yes.
Thank you, Chairman. So FEMA is not concerned with use. It's other residential or commercial, residential or commercial. So we're talking about a commercial use in a highway, a commercial zoning district. We've provided the elevation certificate, which puts the, the base flood elevation at about four feet above the floor of the building. So all mechanical, electrical, everything has to be, I think our code is 17 or 19 inches above, above base flood elevation, 18 inches above base flood elevation. And that's it. We're removing square footage from the front, adding it to the back. So that's a net zero square footage addition. The rear addition is new construction. So that will have to be floodproofed. That means concrete all the way around above the base flood elevation, plus 19 inches. So that back addition is going to be all concrete, right? The building that we're tearing down, that will help anybody downstream in a flood event. The fact that we're removing square footage off the front of the building and putting it on the back will help anybody downstream in case of a flood event. So I understand your concerns. But this is handled with the building office. And Michelle, Mrs. Summers, has noted that in an email to me, saying, this is in a flood zone. This is, is an existing building. And any additions are going to have to be floodproofed. And so that's what we're going to do. And that happens through the building permit. That happens through the construction drawings. That happens with our architect and with our engineers. So to Mr. Whitson's point, I don't think floodplain is really in the planning commission lane. I don't think it's in the Board of Supervisors' lane. I understand it's a valid point. But it's an existing building. In a floodplain, floodway, doesn't matter. If we're building a new building in a floodway, then, then that's a no bell, right? But we're net zero square footage, and we're taking down a big building to make a parking lot. So I think this is actually a great application in terms of FEMA's eyes. And if you have any other questions, I can answer them while I have the mic.
You have documentation registered listing already?
It's, it's in the FEMA maps. We don't have to supply what's called a LoMar, L-O-M-A-R, L-O-M-R, because we're not making any changes to the maps. We're not requesting any changes to the maps. We have provided an elevation certificate by an independent body. It's not like I can say, hey, engineers, can you add a few feet here? Their license is on the line. So this is independent engineers saying that, yes, it's in a floodplain. Here's the base flood elevation. It's a certificate, which is included in board docs. And so hopefully that addresses some of your concerns.
I think probably at this point, my, my biggest concern is that there's nothing about this in the staff report or the planning commission discussion, except the phrase, this property is in a floodplain.
Okay. Is Ms. Summers online?
She is.
Ms. Summers, can you comment?
You're, you're, you're the applicant. You're not supposed to be asking the staff to...
Ms. Summers, this is Kira Whitson, who's chairing the planning commission this year. Would you please comment?
She may be having some connection issues.
Summer? Yes.
Cutting in and out. Sorry. I'll say, Ms. Summers is the floodplain minister, administrator, as she is the zoning administrator. And she is responsible for administering the floodplain ordinance in conjunction with the building official, because the building code incorporates the FEMA requirements for floodproofing or elevation, if it were residential. Of course, you could elevate it if you're commercial, if you want to. But most, most do not. So as Mr. Chapman said, he will have to submit the documents for review and approval, just like the neighbor. If they wanted to do something that was by right use, they would have to do the same thing. If Mr. Chapman decided to not move forward the brewery and put in a fast food restaurant, he could do that. It would not come to this body. And he could submit the documents. And he would have to meet the floodplain ordinance, just as he does today. It would not come to the Board of Supervisors. There's nothing inherent in this, there's nothing inherent in this parcel that would preclude him from developing it from a floodplain ordinance. But he does need to meet the requirements of the floodplain ordinance.
And how will we go about knowing that that's, that's been done? I mean, at what point will we know that?
We can provide you a copy with the permit when it's issued, I suppose. If you want more frequent reports, we can provide you with those more frequent reports.
The floodplain ordinance stipulates under, it's, let me get this straight here. It's 17045. D1, and it says regulating uses, activities, and development, which alone are in combination with other or future uses, activities, and development, will cause unacceptable increases in flood heights, velocities, and frequencies. So clearly, taking a building down does seem to fit that. But you still have the fact that you're going to have, where this is really, for all practical purposes, should be treated as a new use, because there's no use that's currently grandfathered there, other than empty structures.
The floodplain ordinance doesn't consider uses. It considers structures.
It says uses.
That's a preamble section. If you move down to the meat of the ordinance, it will get into whether it's a new structure or an existing structure. But I understand if the, if the board wants more involvement in the floodplain administration, we can find ways to provide reporting for you to do that. If you would like to change the ordinance to name a member of the board to be the floodplain administrator rather than the zoning administrator, I think you're empowered to do that after public hearings. But you have an ordinance on the books right now, and staff is trying to administer to that intent.
I just think that we should have more documentation of what we have here, because it's clearly within the floodway FEMA map. And this is a new use, because there is no grandfather use. There's no existing use.
I think we're at a sort of impasse at this point, agreed to disagree kind of point. If you don't mind, I would like to... I, if you don't mind, I would like to hear.
What are you agreeing to disagree with, Madam Chair?
It sounds like we have the people in place to do the correct reporting and the correct analysis, and it sounds like you want the results of that analysis that will come later.
I didn't see any analysis to start with, other than one line that said the property is in a floodplain.
I want to note that the people on Zoom are saying they can't hear you very well, Mr. Fraser.
I'm saying that there has been no analysis that was made uh, privy to this board, except one sentence that says this property was in a floodplain, so I'm, I'm sorry if y'all are mad at me for asking these questions, but I had no information to, to base a decision on.
Not mad at you at all.
And I, and I, and since this is one seventy forty-five, which is part of the zoning ordinance, it is part of the zoning ordinance and therefore it's a land use question.
Well, maybe, I mean, I think it's. It's, it's a, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. Mr. Goff, have you been following along and, and did you have any?
I do. Uh, I'm going to look at subsection D, subsection one, subsection A, permit required. All uses activities and development occurring within the floodplain overlay district, including placement of manufactured homes, shall be undertaken only upon the issuance of the zoning permit in accordance with one seventy dash one thirty-seven of this code. There you go. And then I'm looking at subsection three as well, non-residential construction, uh, where the standards are set for, and that requires the certification of the engineers to the floodplain administrator. So I think those are the pertinent sections.
And at what point do we need the certification from the engineers?
Uh, this is spelled out in three B. For non-residential construction, new construction or substantial improvement of any commercial, industrial, non-residential building or manufacturing home shall have the lowest floor level block. And all eight one thirty, eighty and eighty seven, making floodproof, blue and elevated, right in all areas of the building, components below the elevation corresponding to the V F P, plus one foot are water type. Was substantially imperfect, was substantially impermeable to the passing of order and use, uh, new structural components having the capacity of resisting hydrostatic, hydrolog, hydrological overuse and the effect of buoyancy. A registered professional engineer or architect shall certify that the standards of this subsection are satisfied. Such certification, including a specific elevation to which such structures are floodproofed, shall be maintained by the floodplain administrator. I interpret that that certification is going to have to be filed with the floodplain administrator. Uh, and it doesn't state when that is to take place, but obviously it's a condition of in building permit.
The building permit's already been issued?
No, that comes after approval from the board.
So you haven't done any work yet to the building? You have a demolition permit for the one you're going to take down?
Yes.
Art, um, work, can you just quickly, uh, point to where you were reading? It was sub- subsection.
Yes, I can.
One seventy forty.
That was, uh, today's, let's get back to the beginning.
I never caught up with you. I apologize.
And he's in paper.
Yeah, it's supposed to work better for, for addled, addled minds and blood aids.
Then we all need paper.
If we're, we're down in, in, uh, subsection D, and then we got to go all the way to, well, the first, the first one I referred to was subsection one, little A.
Maybe.
That says that the zoning permit, you got to get a zoning permit. And then you got to go to three, in this case, because we're talking about non-residential construction. So that's subsection three of some big D.
That's fine. Okay.
Of course, my book is.
Thanks for, uh, waiting on this. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say I, I appreciate that, all the work that the applicant has done in the village to rehabilitate buildings and really, uh, make for some beautiful, uh, rehabilitated buildings throughout the village. I mean, clearly you have great taste and several structures look much better as a result of your efforts in the village, um, which I think we all can appreciate. I don't think it's any secret to this board that we struggle with speed and safety throughout the corridor of two eleven. And I have tried very hard in my time on this board to get the speed limit lowered and to make that corridor a safer place. Both through the speed study we undertook in two thousand eighteen and through the speed study that we just heard the results of at our most recent meeting. Again, no secret to this board. We continue to elevate this or escalate the situation by taking it to other, um, elected officials and back to the Commonwealth Transport, Transportation Board and, um, to the folks at the park, the Shenandoah National Park. But I'm, I'm just not sure that there's any relief in sight, um, through that corridor for speeding and safety. Uh, knowing how much folks are troubled already by these factors, uh, while I appreciate the inventiveness of the business and the time and the approach to this plan, um, I just have serious misgivings about introducing a business of this nature that does have a large parking lot and would have a lot of traffic coming through. And the, and the safety concerns that it may present, um, through that corridor. I know that there's been a lot of efforts made to carve out parking spaces and I appreciate that. I just think if we, if we are to entertain this use, and I'm not at all sure that we should, we should do it with every possible caution because this could easily become a very dangerous situation.
The traffic is, is a very real problem, but I, I, I guess maybe I, I have a burr under my saddle blanket, but I, I'd like to make sure that as part of any type of, of approval process by this board, that we make sure that no zoning or building permits are issued until there's been a, uh, proper hydraulical and hydro, hydrological study done by, uh, engineers as to the, uh, the suitability of that property for, for an increased use like this.
Summers says her hand raised. If it's okay with the board.
Ms. Summers?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I just want to point out a few items. One, before any permits, uh, would be issued, VDOT requirement would absolutely have to be met. FEMA requirements through our local floodplain ordinance would have to be met. We would ensure that it's met before any permit for issued for any sort of alteration to that structure. Again, this is a use that they're seeking a special exception for. They could come in under, um, any, any one use as by way permitted by Ray within a highway commercial district. And the board would not even see it. We would just ensure that they complied with the floodplain regulation. And the rest of our ordinance, and then when issued permit. So I just, I just wanted to make that a point.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, Mr. Whitson?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'll, since we're wrapping up this discussion, I'll, I, I'll just repeat what I've said previously. I was on the Rappan County Water and Sewer Authority for the period of time during which both the Pendroid Brewery and the Hopkins Ordinary Nano Brewery were, were approved both by the sewer authority and then by the board of supervisors at the time, both requiring a special exception permit. And I feel like I have a pretty good handle on the scale of those operations, and I've said it several times, both at the planning commission and here, that to me, um, a very valid, uh, basis for comparison, a very valid benchmark is the Hopkins Ordinary Brewery, and I would argue that in fact, the configuration of the parking lots around Hopkins Ordinary are potentially less safe in some, in some respects because uh, one of the parking lots that's frequently used is quite small. There's no room for cars to turn around at all, and it's quite near the main intersection in front of Sperryville Corner Store. And I think, uh, Mr. Chapman, uh, did a thorough job of looking around the villages Sperryville at other parking, parking lots and capacity thereof for different businesses and no doubt, and I agree with Ms. Smith, the speed and VDOT's response to our request for some kind of modification of speed limit in that area. It feels like our requests have fallen on deaf ears, but I don't believe it appropriate for us to, um, take our dissatisfaction with VDOT's lack of response to date and then place that burden upon, uh, people investing in private business. And no doubt there are other businesses along there. The, one of the underlying conditions that I think is important is we're limited to twenty hours per week. Also, once the building adjacent to the brewery comes down, there's a fairly sizable parking lot and we're not traffic engineers and the VDOT folks are. And as Ms. Summers well pointed out, VDOT's not going to give a green light for this operation if it's not safe and doesn't fall within the parameters of what they deem a safe parking lot with an entrance and an exit that can accommodate the traffic for a place this size. And the brew, the brewing operations that, um, have been proposed, a maximum of five hundred barrels per year, are squarely within what we've seen at Hopkins Ordinary, and that, I think, has worked fairly well. And I know that there are some who would not want any breweries in Sperryville, but these are the businesses that have come around in the, in recent years and I think this one, from a scale perspective and a parking and traffic safety perspective, really is no different than what has been working at Hopkins Ordinary, so. And then I know, um, the sort of moving target of questions posed about what will brewery mean. People have raised questions about stress on the water table and, um, what it would mean to wastewater treatment system. I mean, both of the buildings on those lots, the prior owner had those, um, under, I believe, a half equivalent dwelling unit arrangement with the sewer authority. So in fact, those properties in combination have been counted as one equivalent dwelling unit for wastewater capacity measuring purposes. And so really, at least with respect to wastewater processing capacity, the use here will not change much. Um, it's a theoretical number, but still, um, one building's coming down and the other, um, at even five hundred barrels of beer a year will be generating approximately, and the brewers might correct my numbers, but I came up with seventy-five thousand gallons of water a year. Which is five hundred gallons of thirty-one gallons a barrel times five gallons of water max per gallon of beer brewed. And, uh, a typical residence in Sperryville under the equivalent dwelling unit system of measurement is generating about fifty-five thousand gallons of wastewater, of wastewater. So in the grand scheme of things, I just keep coming back to the conclusion that this is a properly scaled business. It's not stressing out the wastewater treatment system. It's not going to drain the water table dry. I would say it's a relatively, uh, low impact type business, but I also have concerns about the traffic and I think we really have to put those concerns in the hands of the experts and, uh, VDOT hopefully will make a, a thorough determination regarding the parking lot configuration. So, um, that's all I have.
VDOT will only discuss the entrance to the highway. Of course, your ordinance, one seventy seventy-eight, identifies the number of parking spaces that are required and they've more than met that requirement, uh, with the site plan they've submitted.
But you base the number of parking spaces on dining options.
Right. Uh, if you look into the definition for eating establishment, it includes, it's part of the definition tavern. And, uh, so the, the portion of this business where people are going twenty hours a week is essentially tavern. And so it is within the definition of eating establishment. That portion is permitted by right. If, uh, Mr. Chapman wanted to put a bar there, he could do it tomorrow.
I, I think, I think there's so much picking and choosing of definitions and circumstances and the discussion of this application, it makes it very unwieldy because we're talking about dining establishments and taverns and wineries, but this is not any of those things. This is very specifically a brewery. And a special exception is required for a brewery in this zoning designation. So if we keep equating this with things that are by right uses, we have a serious problem and it's, it's not a valid equation. Breweries versus dining establishments are very different creatures. It, you know, if you go into a restaurant, you can't stand around and eat your food. You have to be seated. There's a limited capacity for seating. For a brewery operation, people can stand around with their beverages and, you know, there's, there's no real limit to how many people you can serve. There's a production element to this app, to this establishment that is not present in a restaurant in that it says in the application, it is twenty-four seven production environment. That is very different from a restaurant. And I, I have serious concerns that people keep conflating brewery with other uses or other zoning areas. We keep talking about Hopkins. Hopkins is on a wooded lot. It is not very visible. It is in a village, commercial zoned area. It is not on highway commercial, on an almost bare lot in a turn that is highly visible on a major arterial roadway that is very, very different in nature, and it will surely attract more people. The other thing they came up with the planning commission is that some folks conflated farm breweries with this sort of a brewery and said, well, if, you know, breweries can be anywhere in agriculture. Well, of course they can. We didn't chose that, choose that. The state chose that for us. That's not something I think we would have ever allowed to happen if it had been in our hands. So I think there's a lot of confusing of different situations and circumstances with what is actually before us today. And I would just as soon look at the general standards and see if, if they, if this application meets the general standards. And when I look at one seventy dash fifty-two B, the general standards, the proposed use shall be such that pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated will not be hazardous or conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on the streets serving the site. I, I really have concerns about, and given the history of, of this stretch of the corridor, infusing, um, another additional, what is it, twenty hours a week, probably turn it over every two hours, thirty parking spots. It's a lot of cars. It's a lot of vehicles. And that's not counting if that lot fills up and people park in the village and cross two eleven. It's also a very dangerous situation.
Well, first of all, I'm not concerned about the floodplain issue. Uh, I've never seen it flood there and if it does flood, it's, it's a problem of the property owner. It's not like the building's going to be washed down the Thornton River or anything like that. So, and I don't think it's a, a danger to anybody else. Uh, if for some reason it did happen to flood, but, um, so that's not an issue for me. Uh, I do appreciate the fact that it would be an aesthetic visual of improvement in the village and, uh, and that the improved, uh, property would garner more revenue in terms of real estate taxes for the county. And also, I do believe it would, uh, help, uh, some of the other, possibly the other, uh, businesses uh, that would benefit from the extra, people coming into the, to the village that may go to other shops or restaurants. Are, are y'all planning to serve any food at this at all? It's just strictly, yeah. Uh, so, uh, yeah, and I would, you know, I guess I would rather see this than a, um, than a fast food restaurant, uh, that could come in there by right. Uh, I do worry about the fact that, uh, you know, there's already a couple of breweries and it's, uh, would generate, uh, more traffic for people that were coming to, uh, More traffic for people that were coming to uh. To enjoy a beer uh in the area uh. And uh that worries me a little, uh not just in terms of traffic, but the actual, you know, ability of the drivers. If they decide to visit, you know, all three breweries in the same day and uh. I'm just gonna be honest, you know, as a as a recovering alcoholic, I have a hard time promoting a drinking institution, sorry about that, but. Uh that's probably neither here nor there in terms of my job is making decisions based on what I consider to be. The best uh uh long-term benefit for Rappahanna County and uh. So uh Rappahannock County does have a reputation of not being particularly friendly to businesses. Uh and uh I'd like to, you know, help squash that reputation a little bit over the long haul. Uh and so frankly, uh I have no idea which way to vote on this.
If I could uh make a comment on that, uh I think it's uh. It's it's a it's a wonderful thing you did with your personal revelation, but um I could kinda. I could kinda say the same thing about my own past, but. It's really not up to our personal interpretation of the zoning ordinance of the floodplain maps, it it's in a floodway, it's in a floodway, it's in a floodway and. It falls squarely within our zoning ordinance and we have to, we have to deal with that.
Fine, but it doesn't change the way I think about it.
Um if I may, as a business owner and one that does have a bar. Um first thing I know for sure is if you have more people in your building or your parking lot than you can take care of. All of a sudden, you're not gonna have those customers because they won't put up with it and social media is a killer. Um if you pull into an establishment and can't get service or um you know, you're met with unhappy. Um people, uh they're not gonna stick around and they're gonna let everybody know pretty quickly, so I think it's in the business owner's. Best interest to make sure that parking's not an issue, people can come and go, the bathrooms are clean. And um everybody's safe and having a good experience at your establishment, cause if that stops, so will your business. Um I do appreciate the information I received when I walked around the property. I have to say, and I know it's not a hundred percent the same, but the parking at this establishment versus what is at Hopkins. Is definitely um a better layout and I believe personally would be safer. I did have the conversation with Mister Archer about employees parking on one part of the property. And then the parking lot being right there, why couldn't the employees be able to go out the same way that everybody else went out, so if there's a way. To make that flow work better in a safer way, I think that makes sense. Um I I feel like we're second guessing our and maybe. Uh my misinterpretation, that we're second guessing what we have on the books. Um for what we think we should have on the books and if we can. Um if the applicant is gonna have to go through VDOT and the floodplain um uh director.
Administrator.
Administrator. Um and all the hoops that are gonna continue, it's, I don't feel I can. Get in the way of that process by my concerns about what could happen. Um if parking is happening on the road, I guarantee everybody's gonna be on their cell phone calling the sheriff's office. It's just gonna happen, it's um people are concerned about safety, the speed that we talked about earlier today, I get it. But you've got a lovely jewelry store that you've put in there that I think, you know, people pull off the road there. So you're gonna add another place for people to pull off and it may actually add to the. I commented about bermashade signs, you're gonna slow down going through Sperryville because you're scared you're gonna miss something. Again, that's totally my looking at, if I'm coming into a town. If I'm gonna wanna see what's in that town, I'm gonna slow down to see it, so it may actually help, but we have no idea until we let you try. Um and if you find that you're super busy and super um popular. Then you go find another place, cause you're not gonna be able to take care of the customers the way you want it to. Um so I don't feel like I can um. Just say I'm concerned about it, yeah, sure, I'm concerned about safety. But if the books say we can do this and I can guarantee a restaurant tavern would be busier. Um I don't know how to say no to this one.
Well, I I I read the general standard, the proposed use shall be such that pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated. Will not be hazardous or conflict with existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on the streets serving the site.
Wouldn't you say the same occurs on Main Street through Sperryville where people go faster? Turn and don't stop because they don't know it's a two-way stop or a three-way stop, I mean, I I can't see how. Main Street with all those businesses with people flying through, cause we've had those conversations, is really any difference than this one. It just number of cars on the road, I guess.
I I guess my my. My frustration is that you're comparing what will be a bad situation with other bad situations and saying that makes it okay. When really, none of it's okay.
It's also a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on Main Street, isn't it, compared to forty-five with issues?
That's correct.
But even.
And the zoning is different, it's village residential and village commercial versus highway commercial and that's. They have a very different feel to them, highway commercial has a very open feel, it's mixed use. Um the village commercial, even though there is a mixed use through there, it's a much narrower feel to it and it does encourage people to slow down. Highway commercial does not have that sort of feeling to it. And as someone who lives in highway commercial and is surrounded by driveways, I can tell you, those don't slow folks coming down. Coming through one bit, folks still fly. And look at all of the distracted driving um accidents that were in our VDOT report last month.
That's why I feel like it's a VDOT issue at that point.
Yeah, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but I I picked up my dead horse, my two thousand one Yukon today at B and B Service Center. And if you go, you go past Shaw's, you go past Burgers and Things or whatever it's called now. You go up to B and B and everything in between, there's a lot of coming and going into not even really parking lots. Um and I've been to Burgers and Things, which is right there in that same area. Where there's no place to park and people are still pulling in sideways, parallel to the highway, so. Um I I I'm with you, I'm on the same page in terms of safety, I just don't think it's. Um I don't think it's fair for us to single out. Uh one business owner or one uh one person who's rehabbing a building and saying, well. We've got a broader problem that we've been trying to address and we can't. And so therefore, we can't, we can't help you out with your permit because we're worried it's gonna make the situation that we're asking professionals to fix. Worse and so I uh Ms. Smith, I I totally agree with you that. I mean, you know that, that traffic in that area is not working um and. You know, I I think we have to stay on that with VDOT and um and 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 do our do our work with VDOT. To make that whole corridor safer, but I don't think it's reasonable for us to single out an applicant because we have a broader problem.
We're not singling anyone out, they applied for an exception. And this is the standard to me.
I I just don't think I can agree with Mister Woodson because you're saying that. We know we have a problem, it's a known problem, traffic, correct?
There is a long and studied body of complaints on traffic through this area.
So so we we've got, we've got anecdotal evidence that we've got a problem with traffic, that VDOT is not the one that caused the traffic. VDOT's not the one that causes problem with number of driveways, entrances or parking areas, it's the local governing bodies that that do that. So actually, we're the ones responsible for that problem, if you will, and we're adding to it because we've asked them to. Give us some sort of help or guidance, they say that the speed limit's fine, we all believe that it's maybe not. And the traffic is a problem, so instead of saying that we're not gonna add to the problem anymore because they won't do something on their side, we're gonna. Go ahead and add to the problem anyway, that doesn't make any sense. Did I miss a step there?
I I I've I've expressed my, I mean.
I mean, re- really, did I miss a step there? I asked a question though, and you were gonna go off and some of that, I asked a simple question, now I'll let you answer it, did I miss a step? We know we have a problem, but there was a local governing body that created a problem. So instead of saying that we're not going to contribute more to the problem because VDOT won't do something, anything, whatever that is that we wanted to do. We're just gonna go ahead and possibly not just, not only continue the problem, but continue the growth of that same problem. That's what I think I just heard. If I didn't, if I didn't hear that, then straighten me out.
That's fine.
I just wanna make sure that I understood it correctly.
Mister Mister Fraser, you're not even letting, you're not even letting me respond.
No, I'm going to, but you said go ahead, so.
I've I've said enough, thank you.
Think we're looking for a motion.
Well, I would also just refer, I I think there's some applicable sections in the um comprehensive plan under principle seven. Says promote only economic growth that exists in maintaining our existing balance. And is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character and does not adversely affect active farm operations. Forestry operations, residential neighborhoods, the tourist industry and the county's fiscal stability. Um I would say if if this does turn out to be a a bad situation in terms of traffic and. Um parking and all of those things, it could be very bad for the tourist industry. Um I would hope that it wouldn't be, but that is sort of a worst-case scenario. And then under policies, number four, it does say allow certain commercial development that by its nature must be located in sparsely populated areas. Near agricultural operations, near existing neighborhoods or on specific sites to be so located if. Uh item B, the development does not impede traffic flow on roads and at intersections. And I I that's my 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 biggest hesitation with this spot is that it is um. On such a major arterial roadway as we all have so recently heard and it is near a key intersection. Um that includes fire and rest or just rescue, I'm so sorry, on the other side. Um and that also brings me to um F under that sub same section, sub same subsection. The development is adequately served by and does not overburden emergency services. Um and that is a place where um there's a lot of calls at the mountain. And if there were to be any troubles passing through that area, a lot of motorcycle accidents on the mountain. And um it may impede our ability to respond. And a number five beyond that says we should consider requests for redevelopment of existing commercial and industrial facilities. Only if it causes minimal detrimental effects to the area subject to the provisions of the county zoning ordinance.
So Mister Goth, um what's the what's the statutory parallel to? The general standards, the one seventy fifty-two in our zoning ordinance, for special exception permits?
You got one fifty-two, one fifty-three.
And then um in state code, what would?
Twenty-two eighty-six, man.
Twenty-two eighty-six? Sorry. Yeah, no, I understand.
And I would just add for the record that um I think breweries added an interesting dimension to our county and a tourism. Um aspect that may hasn't been there in the past and I personally don't have anything against breweries. Um but I just, I think this location is not optimal, very questionable and um. And the first time someone, you know, parks on the side of the road or um creates an issue on two eleven, uh we will have failed.
Well, I I think, looking back at a uh legal issue we have, that's still ongoing with another permit application. That this board needs to make findings before you approve or disapprove this application.
I I um I know what you're referring to and I I certainly felt like we did a pretty thorough job of that, so.
Thorough what?
A thorough job of making findings, if you're talking about ongoing litigation, I know what you're talking about.
This this is a di- a a different application and if you're gonna make. Uh an approval or disapproval, I think it has to be based on findings by this body.
Uh I mean, I I pointed to the general standards and specifically.
Those have to be addressed as findings.
Yeah, that's that's exactly what my general standards one seventy dash fifty-two B. Uh the proposed use shall be such that pedestrian and vehicular traffic generated. Will not be hazardous or conflict with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood and on the streets serving the site.
Just sorry for having to ask this, but if we put a restaurant there, how are we different?
It's not a restaurant, it's a brewery, a special exception is required, a restaurant is by right use. These are very different things, they are not apples to apples, they are apples and oranges.
So if they change it to a restaurant tomorrow. All of these discussions are.
We're not here to talk about a restaurant.
We're here to talk.
I get it, but I think everybody needs to understand what a restaurant is.
Parallel conversation was used by the BZA when they approved the B and B that's known as Harmony Hollow. Because up the road from there, you could have a winery with no restrictions and no local discussion. And they used that as the basis of the argument to approve something that should have never been there to start with and that is an ongoing legal problem that we have. Because they tried to make something that was approved by the state. Fit something down the hill from there that had to have a special use permit, should have never been part of the conversation.
Unfortunately, our lovely signer um has about an hour limit and we've gone past slightly. So are we ready to make a motion?
I would just make a motion and I believe we've already pointed pointed out the aspects of principle seven that apply also. Um that's not policy number four and policy um for uh B and for F. And also uh.
Principle seven.
Yes, principle seven, policy four B, four F and five. And I would just say um that that coupled with the general standards uh one fifty, one seventy dash fifty-two B. I believe with the long and well-documented history of. Issues through this corridor of two eleven, which despite our very best efforts as a board. We have been able to get any remedy um from authorities at our disposal that um. With that in mind, we we must deny this application.
That's the motion.
That's my motion.
A motion and a second from Mister Fraser, further discussion? Hearing none, since normal.
I'll need to know how everybody votes, so I can probably figure it out by voice vote, but.
Um I'd rather do a roll call if that makes it easier, Mister Fraser? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mister Woodson?
Nay.
Mister Parrish?
abstain.
Um and nay for me as well.
So that motion fails?
Yeah. I will go ahead and put forward a motion um for approval of. Special exception permit number twenty dash twelve dash zero one, but it's in company brewing tax map thirty-eight A dash one. Dash six B, the application. Meeting the general standards applicable to special exception permit requests articulated under section one seventy. Dash fifty-two of the Rappahannock County zoning ordinance and then reinforced by. Um principle seven of the comprehensive plan, including the following, well. Principle seven itself, promote only economic growth that assists and maintain our existing balance, is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character. principle seven itself, promote only economic growth that assists and maintain our existing balance, is compatible with the environmental quality and rural character. It does not adversely affect active farm operations, forestry, forestry operations, et cetera. And then, in particular, policy two, support a modest diversification of employment opportunities in Rappanak County. Policy three, direct commercial and non-agricultural industry and business into existing commercial centers or designated growth areas. Bear with me, please. Number five. Policy five, consider requests of redevelopment of existing commercial and industrial facilities only if it causes minimal detrimental effects to the area. Six. Seven. Ten. And then also principle eight, protecting the county's fiscal capabilities.
Are there condi- conditions attached to that?
The conditions that should be attached to the special exception permit are those stated in the staff report that supersede the conditions that the planning commission put forward with its, I believe it was a six to one vote of the Rappanak County Planning Commission to approve the special exception permit.
So those are the conditions listed as staff recommended conditions?
The staff recommended conditions without consideration for the, the planning commission recommendations, which have been superseded by those of staff.
I think there are a few important conditions that we should have on here. One is one that's already been discussed this evening, that no food service on site. Either by the applicant or via food trucks or any other food service option. There should be no food service allowed on site.
I can amend the motion if I misstated.
No, you did, uh, just wanna ask for clarification from the applicant whether they are accept and proffer the condition that buses shall not stop to pick up or drop off patrons on the permitted parcel despite what's allowed by one seventy sixty-seven E one. One seventy-six, the special conditions for breweries have a section that specifically allows one bus, I believe.
One tour.
One tour.
Two buses, one time a month.
One time a month. The condition listed by staff is that buses shall not stop to pick up or drop off patrons on the permitted parcels within the route two eleven public right of way. And I'm wanting to generator will turn on. Uh, wanting to know whether the applicant accepts that condition.
So we have a motion with the addition.
It's in there, it's just.
In there. So we need a second, right? So we're in the discussion. We have a second? All second. Now we're in the discussion.
Uh, I do believe that there should be a additional condition of, of no food service on site. The applicants indicated there won't be food service on site. And I, I think something like food or a food truck on site would draw more people in and and really compound the situation. So I think we should, we should say that in the conditions, that there be no food trucks, no food service on site in any form. I'd say the other condition that, you know, for me is a non-negotiable is no special events. Because I know we can all probably remember some special events at other breweries where folks have parked up and down the road. And that would be we, that can't happen here.
Mr. Whitson, it's your motion. Would you like to amend it to add no food and no special events?
We don't have any plans for any special events or anything like that. Will we be the goal of the brewery? Will we be an issue for us?
No food, no special events, and no bus pickup, drop off.
That's in there.
It's in there, yeah.
Well, then, then we get to the one issue that the planning commission included in their recommendation, but staff has said is problematic, and it is problematic, which is that there seems to have been a, a recommendation, trying to find exactly what the planning commission said, that there be an annual review. As we all know, there's no mechanism for actually doing that. Um, so I think if, if we are of a mind to do this, there should be a, an absolute time that the permit or the exception will expire, and there will be a renewal required. That is the only way we have any ratings on the situation. And I would say a two-year renewal is appropriate.
My, I, uh, I don't know the brewing business, but the capital investment is significant. And I think that it's well, your point's well taken, and I think it address, it at least gives us some protection on the traffic or traffic safety front. I think two years is, it's a pretty tight leash to put on some, put on someone who's investing significantly in capital equipment.
Well, I think the problem is that the planning commission recommended something that's not realistic or functional, really, in any way.
I'm learning.
So, I mean, you know, I, I'm trying to fix what we got sent.
Yeah.
Uh, you didn't send me something I can really work with. So, I mean, what are my options?
I'm new.
There's, there's no teeth to a review. There's no mechanism for a review. It has to be a renewal.
I think the, the primary concern, correct me if I'm wrong, is whether or not it, it turns into what we're imagining could be a, a traffic problem. So I mean, without putting a time limit on it, I do feel like Ms. Donahue's points about sort of the nature of business and, and businesses have to manage their own customers and their own traffic, that's, that's the first thing. I mean, it's not in the brewery owners or the property owners' interest to let this go off the rails, and they certainly have been through the wringer with the planning commission and with us now for months and months and months. If, I can't think off the top of my head, a practical mechanism for us to monitor traffic, but I spent a lot of time in Sperryville. And frankly, I spent a lot of time driving around, looking at things that we permitted to make sure that they are working. And I certainly, as one member of our board, will not, as long as I'm around, let something go off the rails there or anywhere else. And frankly, the, one of the owners of Pendroid Brewing is here, and I'm sure he would say that I was pretty tough on the front end because a lot of people were worried about what Pendroid would do to the sewer system in the community, et cetera. Here, I think we've narrowed it down to really a concern about traffic. And so I am on heightened alert that this is a concern, and the last thing I want to see happen for any of us is that it is, does not remain fully under control. So that's a long way of saying that we live in a small community and I mean, I'm here for maybe Mr. Fraser should grant, I'm here for two and a half more years, but I'm kidding, I'm kidding you, but I mean, we're, we're gonna keep an eye on it.
Staff recognized the, the issue there and what planning commission was trying to get at, and the off-street parking as designed has to be there. If it changes for some reason, it would be a violation and the board can revoke the permit. On-street parking is prohibited. If the zoning administrator finds on-street parking, she can issue a zoning violation, and the board can revoke the permit.
But the zoning administrator doesn't work weekends.
I work weekends.
The sign, uh, and of course, we can take photographs and whatnot. A sign shall be posted at the entrance to the establishment that states no on-street parking, making it the the applicant and owner's responsibility to alert their patrons that you cannot park on street. It'll be their vested interest to make sure that their patrons follow these requirements, because if they don't, they will get a zoning violation and you can revoke their permit. And by having these conditions, it enables you to revoke the permit if they don't follow them. Whereas it's very difficult to just say in a year, we're gonna come see how it's going. Putting in, putting objective conditions, then you can, you can measure against those objective conditions.
And I will say, while those are staff recommended conditions, that is precisely, that was precisely Mr. Fraser. One of the primary areas of focus of the members of the planning commission, and we spent a great amount of time going through not only all of that, but also the parking capacity configuration. And the property owner and the brewery owners came back later with more details and a racy engineering study. And so, I mean, I understand that you're not satisfied with my work there on the planning commission, but I can tell you that the other members of the planning commission, I thought, did a pretty good job on, on all, all, all of those objective conditions. And I really, again, I appreciate Ms. Smith's concern about traffic, but I feel like we can, we can only do what we can do within the parameters of, of these types of conditions and this kind of permit, and, and they are on notice. I don't know what else we can do.
Well, I just think that if you're, if you're saying essentially that we expect business owners to be self-regulating, I, I don't know why we do any of this.
I, I believe it's a two-way street, no pun intended.
I need to know.
There's been a lot of give and take here.
Has the motion been modified to add no food service?
No food service.
Parcel and no special events?
No special events, and the bus stuff was already in there. So I, I modified my motion in that regard. And I believe Ms. Donahue.
I'll second.
Seconded, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So there's to be no renewal period added.
You can add it. You can do it pursuant to one seventy dash fifty-four.
You can, you can abstain.
Or specify a period of time. And that may be subsequently extended for a designated period by the zoning administrator. So it may be periodically renewed by the body granting such approval. So it's, you have the authority to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Goth.
If I understand correctly, they'd have to go back through the entire permit process. Is that true?
The procedure granting extension on the mural show is presented in one seventy dash fifty-eight.
The, the board could identify a period for which the zoning administrator could extend. Uh, but there's no guarantee. So you'd be asking an applicant who's going to tear down a house, build a parking lot, buy brewery equipment to do all that for possibly some number of years. Whether they proceed or not, I don't, I don't know. They may, they may not choose to proceed. If it's two years, they may not believe it's appropriate to invest that capital. If it's for ten years or twenty years, then maybe they would be.
Any further discussion?
So there's not to be a renewal period added? I would say even two years and at the discretion of the zoning administrator, she could extend it for six months. So that would take us beyond initial construction to two years and six months.
You should specify what the start date would be.
It would be effective today.
They still have to get regulatory stuff with FEMA, so they may not get that far that fast. Should make it a date certain. One January, like twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three, or, you know, effective review at that date. Effective re- renewal at that date. But, but if they actually have to adhere to the FEMA regulations, and we make it effective today, it may not get very far.
I, I just thought, you know, a year, a year to jump through all the hoops and construction, and then that will give them a year and a half to be in business if we make it two years and six months.
What do you think?
Think it's time for a vote.
I, I, I get this feeling that this was all kind of arranged before the meeting.
It wasn't. I know you always say that, but it's.
Well, you had a whole lot, lot of homework already done with the, with your conditions and stuff, so.
Mr. Parrish wanted to call for the vote. Um, do you need a roll call on this one? Again, yeah, let's do it. Mr. Parrish?
Say.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Fraser?
Nay.
And I.
That fails.
So I have a motion. First of all, I think it's appropriate to have food available at a, at a site where they're serving alcohol. So I would make a motion that we approve the application allowing food on-site and, and, or a food truck. And if there, and I would, I have, I have mixed feelings about the whole thing, but I would be way more comfortable if there was a, a, a limit so that these people would have a chance to prove themselves. And I know it's putting them under unfair financial burden, and this could be their choice if they wanna move forward or not. But I would say that we grant this for a period of, let's just say, three years. And, and they need to come back and, and reapply all over again. So.
Start date of the three?
Yeah, starting today. And it's their choice, but at least they have an opportunity to go ahead and do what they wanna do. And after three years, if it doesn't work out, it's over. If it does work out, they reapply, they get it, they get what they want. So I, I'm in the motion to include serving food and, or, and our food truck. And, and it's a three-year deadline starting today.
So just to be clear, that's the same.
Everything else the same, everything else the same. No, no bus, all that good stuff.
You, you do realize a food truck takes away from parking.
And it's going to increase the number of people that come into the establishment.
I don't care. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate for people to drink alcohol without having food. So that's my motion.
Of a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Of a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Like I said, if you're serving food and, and that adds, that draws more people into the business, you've just made everything worse.
I don't think people are gonna roll in there just for food.
Well, people will. I promise you they will. There are very few dining options throughout the county, and if you allow food, people will go there just for food. You've just added an additional use and intensified the traffic.
You've also just taken customer base, potential customer base away from the other ongoing restaurants.
And you've taken up parking spots by allowing the option for food trucks.
What were you gonna say, Mr. Frasier?
There is a condition, um, that.
This is the law of physics. For every action, there's a equal reaction. So.
Yeah.
By adding the food trucks, you.
Well, they, I mean, they apparently are okay without serving food, so, I mean, I could amend that. You all are okay without serving food?
They don't want to, I mean, they don't want to.
I think they ideally would like to have food component, to your point. Serving alcohol without food. People will serve alcohol.
Yeah, yeah.
But people generally bring their own food a lot of the time if they know there's no food service on site.
I think the concern is probably the food truck, because that is correct, that it will take up parking spots, and you don't want it out front.
I'll take away the food truck idea and just allow food in the facility. No food truck. And I meant my emotion to that.
Okay.
Did I say motion or demotion?
Same as Mr. Whitson's motion, except for a three-year time period from the approval of the special exception. They can serve food within, at the facility, but no food truck. I'll second again for discussion, and my question may be to Mr. Goff. Mr. Parrish said three years, they come in and reapply again, all over?
Yeah.
It's their gamble. They don't have to, if they don't want to, it's their gamble. I know it's a big investment, and if they're pretty damn sure what they're doing, they'll take it. If they don't want to take that gamble, they don't have to.
That's legally allowed. About the merits of things.
It's legally allowed.
Yeah, for the ARCO in 23.
So it's three years from today? Will they have to make it?
Three days from today.
Whatever date we want that start date, if you want to start on the date, then we can. How do we, I mean, their, I have this permit issued.
I start on, just to be simple, today.
Okay. I think today's best.
Prove this today.
You have a motion and a second? Mr. Frazier? Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
What's next?
Next, let's do a quick break, please. Five-minute recess. At the public comment period of the evening, anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be recognized when you come up. Please let us know your name and your district. And then after we go through the courtroom, we will go onto Zoom to hear from anybody that's there that would wish to speak. Ready?
I was muted on Zoom, apologize for that. We're back in session.
All right, anyone in the courtroom that would like to speak during public comment? Not seeing any hands. Anyone on Zoom that would wish to speak during public comment? Again, not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close public comment. Now, enter new business. I am reconvening the broadband authority from their continuing meeting when this agenda item comes to the floor. When was the, when was the?
That's not critical. Fact of the matter is, you're reconvening the meeting.
Broadband authority meeting.
Continue to this date, time, place.
Okay. And we are now a joint meeting between the broadband authority and the board of supervisors. At this time, would like to introduce Mr. Carr from All Points Broadband for his presentation with regards to the Phase One that we have been into with the MOU. Mr. Carr?
Ms. Pandak is online and.
And Mr. Hamilton as well.
And a number of others.
Yep.
So Mr. Carr's going to take over the screens in the room. I'm going to do my best to mimic what he does in the room on Zoom, so Zoom people can see that presentation.
Is Ms. Pandak online as our lawyer?
The broadband authority.
With their conditions placed on her, on retaining her?
We retained her for the broadband authority.
To advise us through this process.
The whole process on a blanket way and not on an action-by-action basis?
We didn't put limits on it that I.
I.
It was to get us through this process.
I thought when we took on Ms. Pandak, we were very specific about the things we wanted her to do, because she billed on an hourly basis.
Can you pull up the retainer agreement?
Sure.
And that she was to be tasked with actions by a motion and a vote of the board, or the authority, excuse me.
Ms. Pandak has raised her hand if you would like to address her.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Pandak.
I wanted you to understand that I was on mute, and therefore, if you're expecting me to say anything, you would not hear me.
Thank you. The question.
I don't have a particular response. I could not hear much of what was said, so I put my phone up louder, so hopefully I can pick it up.
Apologies, and I think we discussed this and voted on it at a meeting before you were approached to handle things for us, but in my recollection, which is always very dangerous, is that we agreed to retain you on a case-by-case basis by a motion and a vote of this authority, and we did not have a motion and a vote as to whether or not to use your services this evening.
Mr. Whitson?
I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find the retainer agreement, but.
I have, I do have it, Mr. Whitson, in front of me.
Okay.
It is, generally, for its body, it provides legal advice and assistance to the broadband authority, and then legal services will provide, legal services as needed to handle certain work related to the extension of broadband in the authority. The immediate work to be provided pursuant to this engagement is review of a Phase One memorandum of understanding. The authority and GTP will agree on other specific legal services to be provided and other details as required.
Thank you, and I now have the agreement.
So that's what, that was my recollection, and it sounds like we didn't agree to have her tune into this.
I mean, but we're still talking about our Phase One regional agreement. It's part and parcel of the same discussion.
Now, I thought the memorandum of understanding was what we decided and voted to take curl on for.
Phase One is history, we would be going into Phase Two sometime soon if we continue the process.
Let me try to put it this way. The public and our board are well, would be well-served by having legal representation through this process. The initial effort on my part to retain a highly competent legal counsel was driven initially by three specific questions, if I recall correctly, but it was never my expectation that we would vote on every single question or concern that we might want our legal counsel to research for us, and thus, I mean, we are still in the midst of precisely what we started with Ms. Pandak, so.
That's what we discussed, that no one would be able to instruct the legal counsel except by a vote of the whole body.
That's correct.
We voted to hire Ms. Pandak.
Who violated that provision of the vote?
I'm sorry?
Who violated that provision of the vote, that somebody instructed Ms. Pandak that she was still continued when we didn't have a vote to continue anything?
Ms. Pandak, do you feel like we're in violation of our?
No, no, you're not talking to her, we're talking to the board, Ms. Chairman. The board had a vote, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Do you have that in writing somewhere, because I do not?
We had a vote, it would be recorded somewhere. Mr. Curry would have that, I believe, at your secretary. Ms. There was a vote, a public vote, where we said, and Mr. Parrish said, you mean, we got to vote, discuss each time that we want to do something with the attorney? And we said, well, how else would we know how to do it? No, no one individual of this broadband authority was authorized to do anything with the attorney. That was specifically discussed.
Mr. Frazier, we voted to hire legal counsel to assist us through this initial phase of the regional agreement.
Right. Who has been in discussion with her since that last night where we all voted to adopt the memorandum of understanding?
I have been in contact with her.
You weren't authorized to do that.
Mr. Frazier, as the chair, I asked her to be present because I actually thought we would want to have our attorney present, the attorney that we agreed to hire and put on retainer.
This is the problem we keep having, you were not authorized to do that. This body was supposed to vote on something of that nature, and you were not authorized to do that. And I have to bring that up constantly. I do not understand that part, Madam Chair. Where I'm confused, Ron, is, I would think the chair would have the authority to that, because here's why. We didn't explicitly, explicitly. Common sense, common sense is, what are we going to do? Call a special meeting to vote, to give the chair the authority to contact the attorney to be present at the next meeting when we're discussing the things that we hired her to discuss? That was your question that night, sir, yes, sir. Yeah, so I think it's appropriate that the chairman has the authority to let the attorney know when we need her for this type of business. The chairman was not previously authorized to do that.
We specifically made it so the entire authority had to vote when we were tasking.
But how would we vote? How would we vote on it? Would we have?
Well, I guess before we continue the last meeting, somebody should make a motion and a vote that we invite our attorney to be included in this meeting for our continued legal counsel, and no one did that.
Just because somebody, just because somebody makes a mistake, doesn't mean that y'all get to go off and exceed your authorization.
I would like to make a motion that we allow Ms. Pandak to be on this call and allow the chair to make the decision when he or she believes the attorney should be present to do the job as the chair is responsible to do.
Madam Chair, no disrespect. No disrespect intended, but you don't have the depth of experience that you need to make those calls.
Thank you. That's why I asked the attorney.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
I'm very concerned that this is going to lead to a lot of unanticipated situations and hefty legal bills, and that was specifically why we agreed to take that position as full authority, that we were only going to task her with things that we all agreed were important.
Because of the limited understanding of some members of this body, maybe all of us on certain aspects.
It's a very limited retainer agreement. It's a, is a review of the Phase One memorandum of understanding, which is precise. Mr. Frazier?
All right, sir, I'm sorry.
You continue to interrupt me, and I have been very patient tonight, and I respect you greatly, and I would respect you more if you'd let me finish speaking just once. Thank you. The legal services are defined as GTP, which is the acronym for Ms. Pandak's firm, will perform legal services as needed to handle certain work related to the extension of broadband in the authority. The immediate work to be, the immediate work to be provided pursuant to this engagement is review of a Phase One memorandum of understanding, and we are still working within the context of that MOU. And I, as an employee of a very expensive law firm, could not be more sensitive to legal fees. And I assure you that I have no interest, as one member of the broadband authority, in willy-nilly bringing outside attorneys to bear on our work. I have no interest in doing that, but I do think that we and the members of the public are well-served by our very competent legal counsel, who you all asked me to find, and I think we did very well, and I think Ms. Pandak showed that she is highly competent in our first meeting, and I have to agree with Mr. Frazier, this, we cannot, we cannot constrain our chair to such an extent that we end up putting ourselves at risk of being in an important discussion for the future of Rappahannock County, where we don't have outside legal counsel advising us, that it's illogical. And so, I support the motion, and we need an attorney. I have no interest in running up the bills. Ms. Pandak, I think, has billed us quite accurately and reasonably to date, and I have no doubt that, as a member of the bar, she will continue to bill us accurately and appropriately. Your point is well-taken, but I just, it never occurred to me that a discussion tonight of the ISP with whom we have entered into a regional MOU, that we would not have legal counsel present for this discussion. It's almost, it, I mean, it's self-evident.
Well, then you should have made a motion and a vote at the last meeting.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
I have further discussion. I do not believe, you know, notwithstanding what the argument that Mr. Whitson has made, that he has respect for these members, but when two members or more of this body go off on their own and do things, then you don't have proper respect for the rest of us.
And also.
And that is why we made that argument, that we work together as a team, and now you want to take that away from this team, and you want to be able to unilaterally make decisions for us. And I, again, you are very new, both on this body, on the other body that you serve, and in the depths of this, I believe that it should be a joint decision.
I have to further voice, you know, my concerns, and that last time, this became very clear to me that we had an issue with this, because not only did two members of this body lead that discussion forward, which I very much appreciated, and it was a way to take the work forward, but then when it came time to go into a closed session, so we could all enjoy being on the same page as the folks that had been in communication with the lawyer at that point for, what, a week to 10 days, we weren't allowed to go? You all voted not to go into closed session?
Um, not to.
And so, I really, I really have an issue with elevating one member of this authority above the others in terms of their ability to access legal counsel.
Ms. Donahue, I would suggest that you amend your motion that we retain Ms. Pandak for the duration of tonight's meeting. That's my suggestion. Or if you want to stand by your motion, that's okay, too. I'm just trying to find a path forward so we can get to the.
Presentation?
Yes.
Well, I think it's illogical. I mean, we're going to have this problem every time we meet, unless we decide who is going to be able to let the attorney know that their services are desired for specific.
I think there are ways that we could have worked on that without, without us being in the dark again.
And I would just say, on the closed session front, I don't, we're looking at a public document, Ms. Pandak's legal memorandum to us was a public document, and I am extremely sensitive, having seen the Board of Supervisors and other public bodies in this county subject to costly litigation for alleged FOER violations, the last thing that I was going to do with a public legal memorandum and a public memorandum of understanding, to go into a closed session to talk about public stuff, makes no, that was my point.
Ms. Pandak herself wrote up the resolution to go into closed session.
Well, and I didn't think it was appropriate, and so we didn't.
Called for the vote?
It's history.
Well, how can you undermine her on one hand and say that she knows what she's doing on the other?
You have a motion and a second? Roll call vote. Mr. Frazier?
Has made the motion now.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Mr. Carr?
Yeah, let's do that. It's a good idea. Members of the authority, my goodness, I go with the volume.
Ms. Tom?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to discuss a strategy and approach for achieving universal fiber of the home broadband for all currently unserved areas of Rappahannock County. On the agenda for our presentation tonight, really two high-level topics. First, just a review, an overview of All Points and the approach that we've taken, the process that Rappahannock has started down, and then a more detailed discussion of really two approaches that we're suggesting for the county to take to participate in this year's VADI grant application program. So as you know, VADI stands for Virginia Telecommunication Initiative, that's the state's primary grant-making mechanism for broadband, because grants are to offset capital expenses. The idea behind the program is to buy down initial capital investment to make broadband, high-quality broadband achievable in areas where it would not otherwise be. As you may know, in early August, the General Assembly accepted the governor's recommendation to increase the VADI fund from $50 million of state general funds. The General Assembly added $700 million of the state share of the federal ARPA dollars to put that into the broadband pot with the objective of creating sufficient resources so that with public-private partnerships and co-investment from counties, this would be the primary opportunity over the next couple of years to finally bridge the digital divide in parts of Virginia where broadband service is unavailable. We view this as important as what happened with the electrification of rural communities some 80 to 100 years ago, and really view the current opportunity in Virginia as a once-in-a-generation opportunity to connect the unserved and to do it one time, to include everyone and to do it right for the next couple of generations of the residents of Rappahannock and similarly situated counties. A reminder about our company, so we are a Virginia-based company. A reminder about our company. So we are a Virginia-based company. We're focused on rural markets. So unlike other providers who start in areas of relative density and affluence and then kind of edge out into other areas. All Points starts in the donut, uh, and we let other people concentrate on the donut hole. We operate in four states, Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, Kentucky. We're the largest company of our size in the region. In each of now the last past four years, All Points has been named to Ink Magazine's list of America's five thousand fastest-growing privately-held companies. Uh, year-to-date in twenty twenty-one alone, and we're very proud of this, our company has received more than fifty-one million dollars in state and federal grants. And co-investment from our electric utility partners to achieve fiber-to-the-home broadband for one hundred percent of currently unserved locations. And, and other partner counties um who have faced the decision that uh this body faces this evening. In the most recent body cycle, um, we successfully partnered with another Regional Planning District Commission, in this case, the Northern Neck Planning District Commission. Two electric utilities, in that case, it was Dominion Energy Virginia and the Northern Neck Electric Cooperative. Um, to design and build a regional, universal fiber-to-the-home broadband project. Uh, initially that project involved four counties. It now includes all five counties on Virginia's northern neck. A very important part of what we're doing here, so. Uh, the legislation we're using to work with certain of the electric utilities was. A pilot program that was authorized for a limited period of time, uh, two or three years ago. That program, we think, uh, based in large part on the very successful example that All Points Dominion and the Northern Neck Electric Cooperative set on the northern neck. Was made into a permanent program uh this January by a. If not unanimous, uh overwhelming vote, bipartisan vote of both houses of the General Assembly. Um, and as I'll discuss and as we discussed before, the approach that we are taking. Uh, in partnership with the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. As the Planning District Commission, who's serving as the umbrella organization for this regional project. Is based on the same successful approach that we deployed last year for our northern neck project. Uh, another key point about All Points, our lead equity sponsor is a firm uh called Searchlight Capital Partners. This is a firm that in the past twenty-four months has invested more than one and a quarter billion. With a B, dollars, in fiber-to-the-home infrastructure in America. That makes them the number-one investor in fiber-to-the-home infrastructure in the country over that period. And they also are, uh, through All Points and other portfolio companies, the number-four builder of fiber-to-the-home infrastructure in the United States. If you think about it, if you're building in rural areas, you're passing a lot more uh locations, so they're, they are very, very active. Uh, and have made a very significant investment in getting broadband to places like Rappahannock County where. Uh, without the type of public-private partnership and electric utility partnership we're proposing, it would not otherwise be economically feasible. Uh, as you know. Several weeks ago at this point, Rappahannock elected to join a regional initiative through the MOU that you entered into. Uh, to develop and then execute. A universal, again, fiber-to-the-home broadband solution for all unserved locations in the county. And the intention of that MOU would be that um we would receive the primary. Uh, non-local, non-private financial support for that project through the state's Virginia Telecommunication Initiative or the VADI program. At present, that regional initiative includes All Points Broadband, Dominion Energy Virginia, Shenandoah Valley Electric Cooperative. Uh, and of particular relevance, the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative. It's led um three auspices of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. And there are seven participating counties. I saw on the Zoom, I know he's, was unable to be here tonight, but Mark Ponton, who is the head of the Rural Broadband Program. At Rappahannock Electric, I, I, is joining us this evening on Zoom and I, Mark, I appreciate your being here to show your support. Um, there are seven participating counties who entered into Phase One of the MOU. To date, uh, three of those seven have been at the. Um, the phase where we are this evening and electing to decide whether to participate in this regional initiative. Of those, all three have committed to move forward. That is Augusta, Rockingham, and Clark. Who have now publicly committed local funding of eight point four, eight point nine, and five point four million dollars respectively. Uh, we have follow-up conversations and presentations similar to the one I'm making this evening with other counties. Um, over the next week and a half or so.
So Augusta, Rockingham, and I missed the third.
Clark.
Clark, sorry.
Working in close collaboration with our electric utility partners on a regional basis and with um. In particular with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative here in Rappahannock, we have now completed a high-level design. For a universal fiber-to-the-home broadband network that would extend fiber-to-the-home service to the approximately two thousand locations in the county. That are unserved by a wired gigabit-capable broadband technology today. Another very important point, and I've, I've made this, um, I think in speaking with you before. Everything that we have done about this regional project and the specific manner in which. And which we put together, the partnerships that are involved, the way that we have designed the project. Is all tailored to be as competitive as possible in the state's VADI program. Um, in our view, and I can't emphasize this enough, there's a very unique one-time opportunity to think big. With big projects and deliver the type of telecommunications infrastructure that is gonna be critical. For currently unserved areas to thrive and compete in the future. Uh, and so, uh, if you have participated in any of the webinars or seen any other guidance that the state and frankly. Um, other federal agencies have, have been putting out. Uh, this is the time to think big if that is the, if achieving big is something that is an objective of the county. Another important point, uh, we have designed the project from the beginning to be an eligible use of ARPA funding. So if you look at the Treasury guidance on that program, uh, among other things, there, there are two key points. One is. Uh, involving partnerships with electric cooperatives, so we have that here. REC is the only electric, the only electric service provider in the county. And the other is um deploying technology that is capable of a hundred megabits per second down and a hundred megabits per second up. And I'm gonna talk about capacity in a little more detail later in my presentation. But the idea there is that the feds, with this significant amount of one-time money, wanna make sure that people are doing it right. We don't want to build and invest in infrastructure that's kind of gonna get the job done or gonna have a life cycle of five to seven years. This is about building infrastructure that will last thirty, forty, fifty years or more. Uh, and that is the type of network that we have designed. We are here this evening to um present two scenarios. Uh, to the authority for consideration and um you will have a, a couple of options. Um, one would be to include the county as part of the overall regional project. Um, and that would be where we require a more significant level of local financial investment. Um, another option would be for the county to proceed as a standalone project. Uh, meaning uh to have a whole-of-jurisdiction solution that was part of, that was a specific to Rappahannock County. Uh, which is another option that the county can, uh, could, could elect to proceed with. Um, either way, you would be, uh, if you choose to proceed, you would be electing to endorse. A specific level of local financial contribution. You would not be incurring that liability at this point. You would be authorizing an application to be submitted. That indicated that would be the level of local financial contribution. And then later, I've got a slide on this, later in the process, if the application were received. And the county elected to proceed and to accept the grant award from the Department of Housing and Community Development. That would be the phase at which the match commitment would become a liability of the county in exchange for accepting the federal funds. I've got two very similar slides. I'm gonna go through with you here. You're gonna see the same map. Uh, I'll talk about the economics of proceeding as part of the seven-county regional project as one option. We'll give you another option that uh would require a lower le, lower level of county contribution. Um, it, one of the things that is a key consideration under the VADI program. Is the level of state dollars per passing. So you're gonna see two formulas here. One has a lower level of state dollars per passing. And a higher level of local dollars per passing. And the other flips that around and, and has more of the non-private share come from the local government.
And that, uh, just per passing, it's a term of art, what does that mean?
Um. Currently unserved location, that distribution infrastructure will pass.
Okay.
So, if you think about it this way, we're gonna put fiber, generally speaking, on electric poles.
Right.
We go pass a home that is currently unserved, that's a passing. And our project will make it so that all of those homes that we pass could, if they wanted to. Subscribe to internet service by calling up, so that that distribution infrastructure would be in place if somebody wanted it. And, or if the current resident doesn't want it, whoever moves in there next or whoever buys the property, but.
It's a way to quantify the households that you're serving.
Correct.
Okay. Could serve. I got it.
Yeah, will make service available too, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, um, either way, for a universal fiber-to-the-home solution, we're talking about approximately. Two hundred and seventy miles of distribution fiber. That's distribution fiber only. It doesn't include certain other elements. Um, the overall project cost would require nineteen point four million dollars in funding. Uh, All Points would re, would secure six point five million dollars, or about thirty-four percent of the total project cost. Um, as part of a regional project, the VADI application would provide, if funded, six point nine million dollars, or thirty-six. Percent of the project cost. And the county's contribution would be five point nine million dollars, or thirty percent of the project cost. This would be an eligible use of your ARPA funding, but I understand this is in excess of the ARPA resources that are available.
Okay, you go, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is that permissible? I ask a question so I don't. If I don't get down there somewhere, I forget to ask the question. Six point five. You said six point five was from All Points Broadband?
Correct.
You're gonna put that much money in?
Yes.
That's not gonna be part of the body money?
No, the body money is separate.
Alright, so the six point nine is coming from where?
That would be the state share of the project.
That's the body money?
Correct.
And you're wanting five point nine from Rappahannock County?
Under this option, yes.
Wherever we get that.
That would be up to the county.
That's right. So six point five is your actual investment from All Points?
Correct.
And where do you get that money, if I could ask the question?
From our equity and debt providers, the same.
So. So if this, if we were to go with this route, five point nine, somewhere along the way, this six point five investor. Your equity investors are gonna be looking for some sort of return on investment, correct?
Yes.
For our five, five point nine, what do we get? Do we get any part of the profit sharing or any part of the uh fees that you charge for monthly service?
You would have one hundred percent of the currently unserved locations in the county, served by a future-proofed technology that is the gold standard in rural telecommunications.
But the taxpayer gets no financial return on the five point nine.
That is correct.
But your investors do on their six point five.
That is correct. The objective of the body.
I understand what the objective is, but I'm just trying to make this point clear in my own head. For the five point nine, which is only roughly six hundred thousand dollars less than your private investors, our county taxpayers get no financial return for that. Five point nine million.
That, that is correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on that.
Yes. So the advantage of this approach is that it keeps the state cost per passing lower. And that makes the application more competitive. Uh, the approach that we have taken and that we would recommend in this. Um, very unique opportunity when there is significant state and federal funding available. Is to ask for enough state money to make the project viable and to work. Um, but to not seek so much state funding that the project became an uncompetitive application and therefore was not funded. It is impossible to know for sure until all the applications are submitted, where exactly that line is. Um, this option, the first option that I'm showing you is in line with the other counties who have elected. Who have elected to proceed as part of the regional application. This is consistent with the level of local match and VADI funding percentage that their counties would involve.
Meaning, put it another way, you were saying that because this option is based on the regional approach. That we agreed to sign some weeks ago, that the, the, um. All of these percentages are fixed across locality, is that correct?
They're not fixed, but they're gonna look very similar.
Okay, and so. You know, it's interesting because my immediate reaction and I, I know this isn't um proper analysis, but at least in my. My simple mind, when I was thinking about a regional approach, I was thinking economies of scale. I was thinking about lower administrative and administrative costs. And I would expect, I guess I would expect in a regional approach that, I mean, all things being equal, that our local contribution would be. Lower than it would, you know, going along, but we haven't gotten your option B, so. But I, I think what I see here is that you basically are saying if you're part of a regional approach, you're more competitive, um. You have a higher probability of being approved. Um, but we're basically now beholden to other localities and sort of this allocation of resources that applies to everyone somewhat equally. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say that in order to be part. We will submit an application for you, whether it's at this level, the other level I'm gonna show you, or whatever is the authority's pleasure. I wanna make that, this is not. Uh, we're gonna lay out two options. I can explain, and they're along a continuum. And it's for you all to decide if you'd like to participate and at which so, at one of those options or somewhere else.
Okay.
So, so I know VADI, when you say VADI money or state money, that's uh the same.
Correct, yes.
And then we are talking about the regional approach right now?
Yes.
And Mr. Carr, I don't wanna sidetrack you too much, um. I know how that is, getting interrupted. So eighty percent was the number we kept hearing. The state will contribute up to eighty percent of a project cost. We kept hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I kept hearing this notion of an eighty-twenty split of a project cost. And we're now not talking about anything even north of fifty percent.
So, and I'm gonna show you second option in a second. Uh, eighty percent is under the budget language that created VADI. The maximum.
Okay.
That the state, that is the absolute ceiling that the General Assembly has established for the program.
Okay.
I'm unaware of any project that has ever been funded by the program at requesting eighty percent. State funding. There may be one, I just, I'm, I'm typically, when we look, you, you need to be. Uh, requesting less than that in order to be competitive. I'm making a very broad generalization that doesn't apply everywhere and I recognize that, but.
You didn't tell us that the last time. To, to, to get this broadband body support for the regional MOU, you kept using eighty-twenty. You never told us that you had never heard of a eighty percent.
We actually heard the eighty-twenty from Richmond as well. They said that they had not, or that their maximum.
Our deal's not with Richmond, Madam Chair, our deal's with Mr. Carr's company.
I agree, but the money's coming from Richmond, so they set the eighty-twenty. He's just saying he's never seen it get to eighty.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm.
Don't you think that you should have told us that? I mean, if I was buying a new truck, I'd be wanting that kind of information upfront.
I'm confident. Uh, that I would not have suggested to this body or anybody, any, any authority. Uh, that an application seeking eighty percent. State funding would be competitive and if, if something I said was interpreted that way, I apologize, that was certainly not what I intended.
I think what you said, and we can go back, maybe there's a recording of it, but I, I believe you said that. Uh, All Points, and I, and I watched the one with Warren County where you also said the similar language, that. It's a, like eighty-twenty, but you would, you know, basically go out and try to get as much grant money as you could to make. The locality share even lower, as, as low as five percent.
I will show you an option in a second with a lower, lower option. And as I said, it's, um, if the county wants to proceed and to submit an application, ultimately it's up to the county to determine what level of local match is acceptable. Um, this is an option. This is the, an option that would be consistent with the other counties who have elected to participate in a larger. Regional project, and if that's not an option that the county wants to pursue, it's not an option the county wants to pursue.
We're not where other counties are. We have to look at our own financial stability, our own resources.
Well, and, and a quick search of, of what everybody got with ARPA, I mean, you mentioned Augusta County, they got fourteen point seven million. And so for an eight million dollar. And so for an eight million dollar buy-in, that's a pretty good deal for them, that's about half of what they got in ARPA. Uh, for Rockingham, they're in the similar boat, they got about sixteen million. So again, about half of what they got in ARPA, they can sink into broadband and be pretty well positioned. And, uh, Clark got substantially less, they only got about three million, but again, compared to Rappahannock, they have a lot of different revenue streams that we as a, as a modest rural county simply don't enjoy, uh, or have, I should say, I don't know that I would enjoy them, but that we don't have, um, so I just, I, I don't.
I'm good option two.
Well, I guess, then, I guess that's what we should do. But I, I thought the regional approach was supposed to be the better approach, and leverage, uh, as Mr. Whitson said, economies of scale, and also, um, gain us traction in our, um, submission with body that reasonable approaches were preferred. So I guess I'm, I'm just hearing a lot of, um, talk that's not tracking with my initial impressions as well.
We do have Mr. Hamilton on the call as well, so.
Five point nine, figured that was four times what we got for ARPA funds.
Well, I will certainly agree with you that ARPA, uh, the funding formula was, was pretty backed, which I didn't say, I'm not at any one of this room. Awarding funds based on population did not tend to direct, to concentrate funds to jurisdictions that had bigger broadband problems. I recognize that, and, and there are great variations across the state in terms of the level of ARPA funding received. Um, another option, uh, at another point on the spectrum, would be a county-specific fiber-to-the-home project. Again, same two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and seventy miles of fiber infrastructure, uh, same overall project cost. All points broadband would secure the same six point five million, or thirty-four percent of the project cost. And in this instance, uh, the county would be seeking body funding of nine point nine million dollars, or fifty-one percent. And the county contribution would be two point nine million, or fifteen percent.
What was your, uh, what was the, um, body contribution of the Northern Neck project?
Uh, thirty-five, thirty-seven in that neighborhood. It's difficult to draw, I mean, every year is different, uh, so the rules change a little bit, the competitive, the different applications come in, so. Admittedly, there is more art than science about selecting the level at which you've uh, fully taken advantage of the state dollars, but kept competitive. Um, so that would be the second option, and let me continue talking about the project. So the outcome again would be fiber-to-the-home broadband available to a hundred percent of the locations that are currently unserved. A lot of people talk about, oh, I want gigabit to the home, you've probably heard that phrase, uh, and uh, giga means a thousand bit, so, uh, that's megabits per second, that's a unit of measure, of, uh, capacity measurement in broadband. So when people talk about gigabit, they, they're talking about they want one thousand download, one thousand upload if it's symmetrical. Uh, we are designing this network, any network that we build, again, we wanna do it once, do it right, and make sure everyone's included, based around a network architecture called XGS-PON, so the X stands for ten, what does that mean? That in the future, when there is a consumer demand for it and an interest in it, uh, we will not only be able to offer one thousand units of capacity to the home, but ten thousand gigabit, ten gigabit service. So this is, uh, the long-term approach and the right technology if, um, to provide the highest quality, long-term, long-lived telecommunications infrastructure for, uh, a rural community that's currently unserved. Our project, if, um, once complete, if a consumer wanted to sign up for the service, they would pay a one hundred and ninety-nine dollar standard installation fee. That fee would include all of what we call the CPE, or the Customer Premises Equipment, so it's the box on the outside of your home, and the two boxes that go inside to connect you to the network and to make the, the wifi work. Uh, our typical deployment model at all points is that your standard install fee includes the first five hundred feet of your service drop. So that's if you call up as a customer, and there's infrastructure on the street in front of your home, or on the poles down there, and you call up and you say, hi, I, I wanna subscribe, and a truck comes out to your location, and they install what's called a drop, it's a small piece of fiber that goes from a terminal on a pole, along the poles, or along your driveway, and they connect the side of your home. So typically, in order to keep costs down and to be as fair as possible, in, in terms of how we, uh, price installation fees, all points, your initial installation fee covers five hundred feet of drop, and after that, you pay a standard fixed per foot, per linear foot cost for an additional drop. Uh, in order to make this particular project and this application as cost competitive, uh, and as competitive in the VADI program as possible, we would commit in our agreement with the county that for the first twelve months after infrastructure was available at a given location, meaning if you called up and asked for service, we would be capable of delivering it, we would waive any additional long drop fee. So whether your driveway was five hundred feet or four thousand feet, uh, if you signed up during that first year, you would only pay a one-time one hundred and ninety-nine dollar installation fee. In terms of this service that would be available, what I'm showing you here is called a rate card, so this is the equivalent of when you stay at a hotel and you look on the inside of the door, there's a plaque that says at this end, here's the maximum prices you're gonna be paying. So, uh, what I'm showing you here is our intended rate card in the market. Um, we would offer, offer these promotions and discounts. Uh, the top three tiers would, would vary based on market conditions over time. Most boards of supervisors, when they're considering, uh, supporting deployment of broadband infrastructure, their primary concern is making sure that a basic level of service that is very adequate for, um, routine residential uses is A, ubiquitously available, and B, affordable. And so if you notice, next to the fifty by fifty, so that's the basic plan, we have the word fix, what do I mean by that? So we would commit, and we would maintain that rate plan at fifty-nine ninety-nine for the life of the project, for the life of the infrastructure, except we would only adjust that price in line with changes to the Consumer Price Index. So the real cost in economic terms of that broadband service would remain constant. There are a lot of plans up there with a lot more zeros after them than fifty, so let me put fifty into context for you. Fifty megabits per second, if you go to Netflix right now and ask them what it takes to stream one HD video, they're gonna tell you five megabits per second. So a fifty-megabit fiber-to-the-home plan is sufficient to stream simultaneously ten Netflix videos in HD with no buffering, or alternatively, five Netflix videos in HD with no buffering, and have two, five children doing Zoom in HD on their computer, it is a, there are lots of other speeds on this rate card with a lot more zeros after them, the point is that a fifty-by-fifty symmetric connection or sixty dollars a month is a very affordable, robust, long-term plan.
Question for you to, can you go back to that? You're talking that five hundred-foot service drop, you mentioned poles, what if it's an underground service?
We will provide a drop to your home for the first year for the standard one hundred and ninety-nine dollar install fee.
Underground.
Correct, no, we're gonna, it will be aerial if we can do it.
I know several places there's no poles.
In, in that case, we won't have an aerial drop.
It'll be underground.
Correct.
For that fee.
For that fee, for twelve months.
What about rock?
What about what?
Rappahannock County, what about rock?
We will commit to deliver a service drop regardless of the length for the first year, for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
You'll put that in writing.
Period, full stop.
Ri- no rock clause.
For the first year.
No rock clause.
For the first year, the standard drop fee of one hundred and ninety-nine dollars will include whatever manner of service drop is necessary to deliver you service.
In writing, no rock clause.
Yep, I think we're good.
I haven't heard a, an affirmation.
Amen.
In writing, no rock clause.
For the first year, regardless of the manner of the drop or the length thereof, for your standard one hundred and ninety-nine dollar installation fee, we will deliver a drop and provide you service. In terms of the timeline for completion, so Rappahannock's local match would be contingent on receipt of a VADI grant award, and then execution of an agreement with all points regarding the project. The grant application, if it is submitted as part of the regional process, would be submitted through the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. Uh, it's due on September fourteenth, if the county elects not to proceed as part of the regional project, uh, the same deadline would apply for a county-specific project. Um, we like to say that in the VADI program, the submission of the application is not the end, it's really the beginning of the middle. Uh, what do I mean by that? The state has a number of processes in place to make sure that, uh, state dollars are only going to fund infrastructure in areas where it's not currently available, so they call it the challenge process. We would be responsible, uh, for managing any challenges and working through, um, the standard application process that the state has for this program. Under the current timeline that's been announced, the state is anticipating announcing the VADI awards in December. Um, the county, again, if the state continues with the same timelines it has for this program that it uses today, we would expect that after grant award, uh, you would have typically ninety days to get under contract with, uh, the state to formally accept the grant awards, and that is the point at which the local match becomes a liability of the county. I do not wanna be cavalier about it, I'm not, certainly not recommending that the board endorse a local match commitment that it wouldn't intend to provide if the grant funds were awarded, um, but a question we have is, uh, we have received is, you know, when do we actually as a county incur that liability, and that would be when, if a grant has been received and the county enters into the grant award agreement with the state. Um, another point about the VADI program is that the funding is paid on a reimbursable basis. So, meaning if the state share is fifty-one percent, and the county's is eleven, all points spends a dollar, we submit an invoice to the state process for that dollar. Sometime later, the state sends us fifty-one cents, sometime, about the same time, the county sends us eleven cents. So it's a reimbursable program, um, and so if you think about the timing of the payment streams and the financing, um, the county's local match commitment would actually be drawn upon over realistically, uh, the process, uh, a twenty-four-month period, and it could be stretched longer than that, depending on the construction schedule and, and the desire of the county.
Theoretically, uh, we're talking about partnering with you through phase two, and if we do that, then surely you would want or expect us to go to phase three with it, that's the definitive agreement. Okay, so for whether it's the, uh, two point nine or the five point nine, when we get to that definitive agreement, I mean, since you're fully expecting us to get there, so we kinda gotta, kinda be on on board with you through this part of the process, if we're gonna go that far. So, are you prepared to sign a, uh, performance agreement with Rappahannock County?
We are prepared to execute a definitive agreement reflecting the terms of the grant that we apply for with the county and with the state as required.
But, I mean, you just mentioned this, uh, reimbursable program, which is exactly what that TAP grant was, that the ill-fated bicycle trail was, that was a similar program, Rappahannock County government would've had to expend funds, apply for reimbursement, and if everything was in the proper order, then we would've been reimbursed X amount of dollars based on the, 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 uh, program and the process, but the contractor there, for a one-point-two-million-dollar project, the eighty percent funding that we would've got through, uh, the federal government, through the, you know, VDOT TAP grant, there would've been a performance bond requiring a certain level of performance by that installation contractor, and I'm thinking that we should have that here.
Right, so.
So you're prepared to do that with Rappahannock County?
We would have a bond.
Performance bond?
Correct. Um, and in this case, we spend the dollars first, I, I don't know about the specifics of this other grant program, but we spend the money first, and then submit it for reimbursement.
Who holds the performance bond?
Uh, well, it would probably be the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission, if you were participating in that process. Uh, if you were had a, had a standalone, that's a detail that we can work out with, with the county. Should Rappahannock elect to proceed, we, we think we have a very high-quality project here. Um, first of all, we got a high-quality network design, it's based on a whole lot of work, and a lot of in-the-field analysis to identify eligible areas and truly unserved locations. And we designed it from the beginning to be optimized for the state's grant-making program. Uh, we have very strong partnerships in place, so, um, if you look at the VADI program, the number two highest point category is a category called Commonwealth Priorities. And if you read the description of what's in that category, it's, uh, things like, are you partnering with electric, electric utilities? Are you part of a larger regional project? Finally, the most important, uh, component of the body program and the scoring process is the state does not wanna see cherry picking, what they call cherry picking projects, that are looking, you know, picking out a couple more marginal uh, pockets of density that the state is looking for, and rewards through the program projects that extend service to one hundred percent of a jurisdiction's remaining unserved locations. Um, so finally, I mentioned that our Northern Neck project was, uh, launched under legislation that was originally a pilot program, that program was made permanent, uh, this January. Uh, there were a number of counties on the Northern Neck, uh, considering moving forward under an MOU under similar circumstances as you are this evening, though, um, without the same level of state funding available to make projects happen. Um, those counties took advantage of this partnership and our approach, and we received a very significant VADI award, and these are the representatives of those five counties, and in that case, the Planning District Commission Director for the Northern Neck Planning District Commission, Breaking Ground.
Ms. Pandak?
For how long has there not been sound? I've received chats from several other individuals indicating they're, they could hear. Yeah, Dr. Grimsley confirmed she can hear.
So the point here is that what we're doing is new, it's different, it's not brand-new. Uh, as you can see on the screen, it's working elsewhere, similar projects, regional approaches with multiple counties to achieve universal fiber-to-the-home. It is expensive. Uh, we're talking about the twenty-first century equivalent of electrifying the countryside, we're doing that with a new utility. Um, we recommend doing it the right way and doing it once, and we think that this is a unique opportunity has come together this year with this significant level of investment, and with that, um, Madam Chair, members of the authority, I'm happy to take any more questions you have.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Um, I've got a few questions, and, uh, Mr. Curry, I was trying to, I was trying to ask you quietly, do we, um, and this isn't for Mr. Carr, but by way of background, do we know, um, is there a data set somewhere that shows what Augusta, Rockingham, and Clark received?
Yeah, I think supervisor Smith referenced, there's, uh, one hundred percent based on population. Um, I suspect if she.
I'm sorry.
Mentioned those numbers, they're accurate.
You had, you had popped up to the, um, to the back when I cited them. Augusta's at fourteen point seven, uh, Rockingham was like fifteen point nine, I rounded up to sixteen, and Clark, I think I rounded up slightly, it's, it's basically three million. And they all were in the eight million, uh, plus figure, if I remember correctly, for their contribution.
There was one that was. There was one that was five point, I thought you said one of.
Five point four?
Clark, I think, cause there's.
I believe Clark was five point four, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, well, you asked the question I was gonna ask, sorry.
Hard to pull up Warren.
No, it's very easy, they're all on that.
Warren's forty thousand people, so it's just a multiple of.
So, Mr. Carr, I'll just try to go through these, I know last time I had like nine questions for you, hopefully I have fewer than that. So the Northern Neck project, uh, we saw that, we saw that photo, what's the status of the project, and how is it going so far?
It went to construction in July, it's at the beginning of construction.
Okay, um, next question, Searchlight and your relationship with Searchlight, so. Next question, Searchlight and your relationship with Searchlight. So they're a private equity investor. And are they, are you the technical partner and they're the, they're providing equity or they?
Correct, yes. They would not be a party to the application.
Okay, all right. And then Augusta Rockingham and Clark, thank you, Ms. Smith. So I heard you say that you're not including wired gigabit households, I think is what you said. And so our two thousand, our two thousand households are everyone except for wired gigabit households.
Everyone who is not served by a qualifying service, which in Rappahannock is going to be a cable service.
Okay. And then, what about Chantel, Matt, Ardaev area?
Yes, so.
How do you reconcile that?
There are a couple of approaches. If the county submitted a, an application in an area where there is a non-satellite ARDOF winner, under the rules of the VADI program, one of two things would happen. The non-satellite ARDOF winner could challenge the.
Us with the number of households that we would have affected, which would be the only ones eligible for our sources of funding. That was upwards of about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think, would be an obligation that we would have to try to search for for families. Whereas the, the go-it-alone would be around three hundred and thirty thousand if the two thousand households is the number you're using per household. And that's really rough math, just to give you a sense of what we're looking at. But then there's other constraints for the money as well. I do, those were really important questions about supply, demand, time constraints, because those dollars do have a time limitation on them. And it's not as long as the county money. So the school obligation funding has to be obligated and spent and covered by the September of twenty twenty-four, whereas the county numbers, I think, are twenty twenty-six. So tie-up in that could really limit the ability of the, the school funding to flow through appropriately and then go through the proper channels for state reimbursement. So that's something I'm really concerned about with, as we watch these timelines, to be sure that, that can be accessed. But yes, there are funding sources that we could put toward this project. But of course, whatever the county decides they want to do is gonna depend on what we can go after and access. But there are those, the sources available.
What, what was the source of your three hundred and thirty thousand dollar figure that you just, you just put forward?
I took the, the, what was it, two point two million, I think I heard, divided by the two thousand underserved households. We have three hundred and came up with a really simple, quick math figure, three, three hundred and thirty thousand.
So she's taking a local dollars per passing cost and then applying it to the three hundred underserved students that households she has.
This wouldn't be double counting some other funds that we would be counting because, I mean, when we, when we actually get to the point where we vote to go forward with something, we're gonna be counting every dime that we can get our hands on. And I'm saying, well, I'm not saying that I'm for or against something right now, but, I mean, if there's a a time constraint on your funds, it's not applied or applicable to the Board of Supervisors funding. Yours could be spent first. So to speak.
Absolutely. That was one of my questions, would there be a way to prioritize at least the invoicing and project funding to be able to use that funding source first because there is time constraints on it? That'd be an important consideration.
I wouldn't want to put any words in his mouth, but I think Mr. Clark could find a way to do that.
But, and, and we would just have to be confident that the Esser source was okay with the aggregate and the percentage of all costs and not actually having to prove you went by a particular student's house in a particular order of the project.
Okay, and one thing, if we decide, technically, we could say, okay, we're gonna go the regional route because we can back out in, in January. If we decide to go the direct route, does your work pretty much mirror what you would have done on the regional side for Rappahannock County anyway? So we don't lose anything from your standpoint if we decided to go the, the direct route versus the regional? Is it pretty much?
Yeah, so may, I, let me be really clear about that because I'm realizing that I wasn't. You would still continue under the MOU. We would still prepare the application for you. The only difference is that the specific application that named you, this could happen with another county as well, would have a different local, a different, we would submit more than one application to complete the entire regional project. But you would, you would still be proceeding under the MOU. We would still be partners together. Rappahannock Electric Cooperative would still be part of the process. You would just be selecting an option that will not score as well in some areas. That, your, your specific application won't be as competitive in one of the funding categories. And I wish.
And I'm sure you will leverage the wording in the greatest way possible to reference the fact that
There'll be.
the same company is doing, it's an all sorts of local, well, you're still, you're providing similar services in adjacent communities. And in some way, that is a regional project.
Yeah, and I, I think Lonnie mentioned as well too, everyone's, the program is different every year. The pressures are different every year. And every year, you, you can't go back. Nobody knows in advance because the applications are scored against the other applications that are submitted. So nobody knows upfront. What's the number we gotta be at to get funded this year? You just don't know. And so this year, yeah, there's a lot more money. And there's a lot, just looking around, what you read in the press, there are a lot of counties that are saying, this is our year. Let's think big. And so it's, as I said, it's more art than science and then figuring out where on the local match continuum you are. Because the, the trade-off there is the, the more state money you seek, the less local money you put up. But the less competitive the application becomes.
Who is the body, maybe this question is for for Mr. Hamilton, but who is the body and the makeup of that body that's going to make this determination?
It's scored by the, the state. The Department of Housing Community Development administers the VADI program. And so they have, you know, they are grant readers. I don't know what, you know, how exactly it works internally, but it's, it's scored by the, the career employees at, at the state agency that administers.
The career employees, not the appointees by the governor.
Correct.
But the appointees of the governor, the Board of Directors, if you will, they hire these people that are their career appointees, their career employees.
It's been a long time since I worked for the state. I know that the governor appoints the agency head. But of most of the employees, I think all of the employees, I don't know that.
There's gotta be some kind of governing body like there is on D four or something.
There's a, I don't know for sure. My guess, I think this is right, is that the governor appoints the agency head. I don't know if there's a board. I just don't know.
Going back to that bike trail, but it's the only thing that's really significant that a lot of people can, can, can look at and, and examine and compare apples to apples, if you will, even though it might be apples and kumquats. But it's a similar process. It's reimbursable program, it's grant money. And that was one of the dumbest applications that didn't make any sense. And yet it got approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board, which is appointed by the governor.
Some hands raised. Lonnie probably could respond to what we're talking about, and his hand is raised.
Yes, so the applications are scored by DHD staff, so they would not be an appointment for.
So you have, you have established criteria that you would use to, to weigh each application?
Yes, the VADI guidelines lay out what we score on and how the score works. So, you know, we were, I think one thing we, we score on is speed, for example, that a project provides. And so, you know, there's kind of like, there's more or less an idea that kind of higher speed you're providing the project, the more points you get, the less action. That applies to all, a broad range of categories. And those are laid out in the, in the guidelines and you score the application off the same guidelines.
What about project viability, whether you think it can come in on budget or on time?
I believe that is scored somewhere. I would have to have a written party. I think there, there is some, there is something we need to consider, however, and that would be considered for every applicant.
Project readiness, I think, is the category.
Yes, thank you. I couldn't make the exact wording.
Ms. Pandek has her hand raised.
Madam Chair, I, I had two questions. One is whether the choice between option A and option B changes the timeframe for providing the service in, in the county. If we are in option A, theoretically may be later behind the provision of service than some other localities. And option B, would we move ahead quickly? And then my second question is, is it possible to hedge your bets with two applications? One as part of the region and then a single one as well, or is that not committed?
I'll take those in reverse order. No, you, you got, you can submit one application for one area. You cannot submit two competing applications covering the same geographic area. In terms of option A or option B affecting timeline, no. The, the primary difference between option A and option B is the relative competitiveness of that application against the other applications that are submitted by the sixty-plus other counties who have indicated they are participating in the program this year. That, that is the principal decision point.
You would know that you are behind three counties.
You're saying that if we have to go alone, we couldn't also proceed forward into regional?
You would still be part of the regional initiative, but your, your VADI application would be on a separate application.
So.
Because it would be materially different and an important characteristic. State share of project cost.
Mechanically speaking, I mean, do we need then to execute? If we went, if we went the go-it-alone way, would we have to replace that MOU?
No.
That led to tonight's discussion?
No, because you would, you would, this is still a regional project. It's just, your VADI application would be different from the other participated counties, so.
Okay.
And if we backed out, the other counties aren't hurt in any way? Because there's five versus six or?
You mean if you submit?
If we go it alone.
If we go it alone.
The strength of the regional approach.
No, I don't think so.
We would have to actually vacate that former vote, the broadband authority, for that to happen. But you're saying that we could.
No, you would still be under the MOU. We're just gonna submit instead of one application, two.
But, but to, to Mr. Whitson's question, in order for us, or Ms., or Ms. Donaghy, rather, that the only way that it would affect that regional thing for us to be considered a pullout, we would have to actually vote to withdraw from that.
Correct.
Okay.
Are there counties where the numbers are sort of flip-flopped? It seems like, you know, we've got the higher number for the regional approach and the lower number for the go-it-alone. What, what is, what would cause it to be more advantageous to take the regional route and drive those numbers lower than the go-it-alone route?
So.
Or our cost is.
The total cost of the project is fixed, regardless of which option you choose.
Correct.
So, and you all, that total cost in Rappahannock, which is if not the, the second most expensive place to deploy fiber, I think I have seen. I'm not telling you all anything you don't, haven't already lived through.
That's an important point.
Yeah. You are benefiting already. That the cost per passing, the cost of the overall project in the county is benefiting from economies of scale already. And so the difference between participating in the consortium grant application or submitting a county-specific doesn't impact what it costs to do this. And your suspicion is correct. I haven't run the numbers because there's not a way to do it. But I'm sure that if you said, okay, we're only gonna do two thousand passings in Rappahannock. The, instead of nineteen million dollars and change, it, the, the cost to do this is gonna be higher. Right? Mobilizing crews, paying for design, buying stuff for a two thousand passing project is a lot more expensive than doing it for a much, much larger project. So.
And that's the primary variable driving this, is what you said, it's like the second highest locality cost. I mean, we know the, you, you throw out a figure of two hundred and seventy miles. It's not mileage. It's, it's the fact that we have a low population, the people spread out all over the place, right?
That would probably be the cost.
No, I mean, the, the primary driver of the cost is deploying the, two things. The distribution infrastructure that you gotta put in place, whether or not you get a subscriber, A. And B, committing for that first year, that it doesn't matter what kind of drop you got, it's gonna cost you a hundred and ninety-nine bucks. So, that, like, that's just the, that's how to think about the capital investment. It's the cost per unsur passing. That's the metric. That's the metric the state uses. That's the industry metric. And Rappahannock County, because it is of its geography and terrain, is an expensive place to build things. Anything.
To directly answer Ms. Smith, your question, any of the other localities could choose to submit an application on their own at a fifty percent and drastically reduce their share, their cost. But they would rather use their ARPA money that's in the bank and have more of a sure thing to get the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
It's kind of like playing twenty-one. You gave us two options. With only two cards. What if we had a third card where we went forty, eighty percent?
So I think what he says, I don't think you could get to eighty percent with all the other numbers. But this body, these bodies could select anywhere on the continuum, quite frankly. And you could push the state percentage up so that we maybe contribute nothing. I don't know, five percent. But it would be much, much, much less likely to be funded. So somewhere along that magic line, you're the last one in. And if you only knew you were the, where that line was, then you, we would pick it.
Right, and.
I understand that, but I'm trying to, there's people listening and the press hopefully will print something that's, that conveys this. What, what about if we choose neither of those and we want to go with that eighty percent? You, you don't want to make that application? We're supposed to be.
We would do that, but my very strong feeling and recommendation is that that application would not get funded, just because of the nature. I don't know for sure. That's my guess. That, that is my considered estimation, is that the competition for the funds this year is going to be significant. And that a project that, that asks for the ceiling of what is allowed under the statute is, has a very low prospect of success. I can't quantify that for you. That's just, that's my sense, looking at how the program works.
How did we end up at fifty-one on the continuum under the go-it-alone local approach?
We picked two numbers. One of them was in line with the others. And this about fifty percent is something that you frequently hear is an unofficial dividing line. So we gave you a number there. And that's, they were to, that's to show you two points along the continuum to support the discussion. There's no magic about that number.
Okay.
If we were to ask for an eighty-twenty, you know, match or eighty-twenty solution, would VADI likely come back and make us an offer? Or is it gonna be black and white, yes or no?
No, you don't. That's, you gotta put your, they want, I mean, the program, not they, the, the program is designed to force people to dig deep. So that you, that the state gets as much. So that you, that the state gets as much for its, it gets as much leverage on its funds as possible.
Twenty, twenty's deep for Rappahannock County, that is what, what people, you know, don't seem to understand.
No, I do understand that, and that's why I gave you a couple of options and I said we could do any other one, I'm just.
Digging deep for these others, that's half of what they received in ARPA funds. Digging deep for us is four times our ARPA.
It's finding other funding sources in the time that we would have to find other funding sources. And we'd have to be highly motivated in this regard.
But what funding sources are available, though, that we can come up with that kind of money besides a loan?
Grants. We talked about school, I mean, Dr. Grimsley threw out three hundred, I think I calculated three hundred and sixty thousand dollars if we take three hundred of the
We got a three million dollar deficit if we use ARPA funds and the funds that Ms. Grimsley, Dr. Grimsley was talking about. We're talking about a three million dollar deficit.
Well, I'm, right now I'm working off a two-point-four million, so.
Point nine.
Two point, even at two-point-nine, we got a million dollar spread.
Right, and I think that there's, I mean, I'm.
We don't know what's coming from the infrastructure bill, that the state's getting a fortune. Your guesstimate was like a billion to the state. So that money's still going to be distributed in some form or another. We don't know how much. And we do have, I think, other grant options between the school and possibly PATH.
They're still talking a million dollars. A million dollars.
Some share of our local money.
So just with the, the way the math works, with a nineteen-point-four million dollars total and all points and six-point-five million, the most that you could ask the state to provide would be everything else, which is twelve-point-nine million, that's sixty-six percent. Now, I don't think, I don't know if there's another requirement that there is actual local dollars in as a requirement of body, I don't know the answer to that. But I would, I would think if they're looking down the applications, whether the locality put any skin in the game at all would be.
There's gotta be a score there somewhere.
Mr. Hamilton has his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, there is a, there's a requirement for a minimum of ten percent contribution from the local government and the private provider, which is going to give you that minimum twenty percent.
Oh, okay. Well, we can, we can confirm that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Parrish?
Well, if we came in with a really low bid, say up to ten percent or whatever, and then they said no, then where are we?
If the application is submitted.
Is, yeah, submitted and rejected, where are we?
Then you could apply again in the future. Under whatever rules and funding are in place in the future round. I don't know the, you know, how the world shakes out after this application process.
But so far, everybody's been approved, supplied?
Oh, no.
No, so far each of the counties in this region who are part of this MOU with all points on these electric utilities have, A, elected to proceed into phase two, and B, made a higher level of local contribution in order to keep the VADI cost down.
State grants, VADI grants, there've been relatively few awards relative to the number of applications. It's been vastly oversubscribed. Is that accurate?
Correct. I'm sure that someone can, you know, Google the numbers, but I, I seem to recall that it's usually been oversubscribed by a factor of at least two.
If I, pardon me, just a procedural matter, it's twenty-five to eleven. I'd like to put forward a motion that we extend the.
You're gonna say adjourn.
No, ex- extend our automatic adjournment time beyond eleven o'clock, and I don't know how specific my motion has to be. But I just moved that we continue until we're finished here tonight.
What we consider finished, I think we, we probably ought to come back on earlier, I mean, another time earlier in the evening before we make any definitive decisions.
Just get submitted on the fourteenth, I don't know, well, actually, probably the twelfth, from what I understand from the others.
We should not be making.
Oh, we need a second first on the motion, sorry.
I'd just like to extend the, extend the time limit so that we aren't forced to adjourn automatically. At eleven P M.
It's only twenty-five, too, we got another twenty-five minutes.
Thinking ahead.
We shouldn't be making decisions of this type late at night.
Of a motion, a second discussion.
We're gonna adjourn anytime, but I'm just, I just don't, we have a rule here that I just am mindful of.
All right, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
Man, I'm having a tough day today.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just say, I, I feel very strongly about this. It has been a rotten day in Rappahannock County. The weather has just been terrible. It may have kept people away, it may have impeded people from joining us via Zoom. It may have made it so they had a hard time hearing things today or interacting with us. This is a very big decision we have in front of us tonight, and we should let people simmer on it for a few days, give us feedback, and have further discussions before we even consider taking any action on this. We should not be transacting this business tonight, especially in light of the weather that we've all endured today.
Yeah, but I, I just didn't want us to, that's fine, I don't disagree, I just didn't want us to. Run out of time.
So all points broadband is doing a lot of work to prepare a VADI application that's due on September fourteenth. Is there a date? I, I know there's a lot of work going into that, so if the joint bodies were to, say, continue this meeting to another day to further deliberate, and given the use of courts, if you're using this building, next Wednesday could work. If not, you'd have to maybe pick a different location, but is that too late? That'd be September eighth?
We would need to know on the eighth.
I don't know if that's an option for the boards.
And, and we'll manage it the best we can, but I, we're cutting it awfully close in terms of our ability, just from a resources and time perspective, to put our best foot forward in a book report grant application, especially if it's not part of one that's already being written. And we will absolutely do our very best to do it, but resources are finite and, and.
Well, it's definitely open on Monday as well.
Labor Day.
Being Labor Day, so.
Tuesday it's not.
Just not scheduling for Labor Day.
Different than ten thirty-eight on Wednesday evening.
But I think if, if there are more questions for me about the specifics, just looking at my calendar and other presentations, this is the last night that I can be, commit to be here in person to answer your questions. I will do my absolute best to appear remotely at another time, but if there are other questions that board members have for me, I would wanna make, if there's any questions anyone's mind now that I have an address, I would ask that.
So I got a question then, so what is the most that we could hope for? What is the best-case scenario in your opinion? I mean, what you presented here, that is the two-point-nine million. And how much of that would we actually end up paying? Out of, out of our general.
There's schools, there's potentially other grant.
Infrastructure bill that we don't know about yet.
Our obligation is go find that two-point-nine million.
Through grants and.
Any member of resources.
Right.
Well, to be fair, we need about a million bucks. We don't have that option.
So in your opinion, though, if we had a million dollars, we would be able to go forward with this and provide the.
I'm not saying I would do that, I'm just, I'm just trying to be objective.
From our general fund.
Or from, hopefully not, but from an unknown source.
We run our, if we were to run our general fund down that low, that's not a good idea.
Oh, well, I, I mean, I shared with you your, your cash position. You definitely could, as a community, do that without any problem. I would have zero reservation in doing that. Now, it may not be the best use of those funds, you have a lot of other expenses coming up, and there are probably a lot of, there are more grant resources for this broadband than there would be for those other things. So you really wanna go beat the streets to get outside dollars for this. And we talked to a couple of people, Dr. Grimsley, and I mentioned others to you in passing.
Let's ask through my questions real quickly here.
We have a few minutes, and since this may be the last time Mr. Carr can join us, I know it's a little unorthodox, but do any people here on Zoom, Adam Chair, would you be willing to have them ask questions? I know, I know sometimes our best questions come from folks that, that tune in or, or join us in the, in the gallery.
We do have a little bit of time, and Mr. Carr is in the room.
It just might be our last opportunity to have public questions answered.
Anyone in the building that would like to ask any questions? Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak while Mr. Carr is here?
It seemed like a good idea at the time.
We, we do have one person in the room, sorry.
No, all points is at risk.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson?
Distribution fiber, yeah.
When we roughed out the cost of this, we estimated there was an additional two hundred miles of private roads, driveways, drivers of the home-time distances. I do not see what the money to pay for that comes out of nineteen-point-four million dollar budget cost. I figure about seven million dollars' money.
So, couple of points, you're right, the, when you look at the total mileage of fiber in addition to distribution, you're gonna see almost two X i- in terms of total miles of fiber, agreed. We are following primarily not centerline road miles, if that's what you use to calculate, but pole routes. And as I've said, if this is an expensive project, I think as part of a much larger project is going to be the cheapest it can be done. It is expensive. I, I do not disagree with that. This is what our cost estimation models and the analysis and the design that we've prepared. We are prepared to commit to delivering the project for the fixed local match commitment that we've discussed.
And you had, I remember from the Zoom call, you, your team had access to very detailed REC data and layout of their electric, electrical transmission system in the county. Is that correct, which is how you, what?
We work very closely with the electric utilities, yes.
If y'all remember, I told this body at the meeting where it approved that memorandum of understanding, that regional one, that because of the, the size of our county compared to Warren County and their road miles and all that, et cetera, just using that information that we would leave between the five and eight million dollars that they were quoted. And here we are now looking at, on a regional point-nine. And I didn't do any driving around, I just used that data. I didn't use the data that Mr. Anderson has, I just used road miles. So I, you know, obviously, if you've got nineteen million dollars to work with, whether it's your investors or state taxpayer money or the county taxpayer money, you ought to be able to put something in for nineteen-point-one million dollars or nineteen-point-four, nineteen-point-four. But if there's any profit to be made, after all, the profit's gonna go to all points broadband, which is you. And any profits for the investment will go to your investors and not to the taxpayer. If you can compare that to what this board did thirty years ago with the Delphi cable, we have a franchise agreement, we get maybe limited funds, but we get some money out of that, and the taxpayer didn't foot any of that. Now here we're asked to put in anywhere from two-point-nine million to five-point-nine million dollars of taxpayers' money, not counting the six-point-five of state and federal tax dollars. And, and again, there's no return on investment. I, I just got one question. Do you have any vacancies on your board of directors right now?
No. And I think a very important difference between the cable model and what we're talking about, you, you're really narrowing in on a very important point there. What the cable incumbents did, and this was their business model, they came in and they offered service to only those areas that were densely populated enough to be profitable with no outside investment. And by doing so, it's like an insurance pool. It took all the healthy patients out of the insurance pool. So now, we gotta figure out a way to insure the rest. And it cannot be done with private money alone. The market has spoken, we know that. So it does take other sources. And it complicates it, the fact that we can't use these monies to go overbuild and offer service in those areas, but those are the way the, the rules work. So I think it's, you, you have to think about, you don't have to, I would encourage people to think differently about what happened in the areas where the service is available and where the density supported it, and what happens in the areas where those market conditions don't exist. The same thing happened with electricity. Investor-owned utilities deployed lines in jurisdictions where investors, where, where you could form private capital to fully fund the system. And there was not a mechanism to electrify the rest of the country. And so Congress created the REA, and they intervened in the capital markets to artificially reduce the capital cost for deploying network infrastructure. That is how companies like, co-ops like REC were formed. And so what is happening with this century's critical infrastructure is a different variation on that same thing. There are areas where private capital alone can do the job. We know what those are. By definition, they're the places where you have a cable incumbent. But we got a big problem getting infrastructure to everyone else who's not in that. And so rather than using an REA and a debt market-type solution, the approach that Virginia and most other states and the federal government are taking is more they buy down the initial CapEx through one-time grant programs.
Right, but there's a debt load with that. I mean, we, we, they, they have created trillions of dollars of debt of this infrastructure votes that they had. So the thing is, we've got Comcast, hey, they run past my, my neighborhood, Comcast, they're on the ground, they're here, and they don't wanna participate in these programs. So I, I, I just wondered, do you have any feeling for that? Why that's.
What we're doing is not their business model.
Yeah, but it ain't a bad business model when your investors make return on investment, but ours don't. You got a pretty good business model. I, I operated a business and, and several years, thirty years, and I never had anything like that. Nobody, nobody ever gave me a cash infusion where they didn't get anything in return. And that's, you know.
What, what kind of internet service do you have? What, what kind of internet service do you have at your house?
Comcast.
How about you, Miss Smith?
Xfinity Comcast.
What do you have, Chris?
Piedmont broadband.
What do you have?
Piedmont.
I have Piedmont, and this past weekend. We didn't have Piedmont, we didn't have Century Link landline service. And like, any citizen we hear about, I was sitting in the library parking lot, trying to contact the ISP to get my constituents hooked up again. And contacting Century Link to get my constituents hooked up again, um, so.
Until three years ago, I had dial-up.
Okay, well. Um, I'm speaking with authority as, as a representative of the underserved.
We're all representatives of the underserved.
Fair enough, but I'm just, I'm speaking from direct personal everyday experience trying to.
Live, I mean, I. From working parents all the time that have their children at home, try to do homeschooling, we all acknowledge it's a very difficult situation, that's why we went to a lot of trouble. To form this authority, we went to a lot of trouble to take on the regional MOU, went to a lot of trouble to get legal counsel. We all have acknowledged, and somehow saying that because I have better internet service at my home. Makes me more, eh, eh, less concerned about it than you.
No, that's not my point.
It's incredibly insensitive. I have the floor.
I do too.
I have the floor.
Let me finish.
I have the floor, and when I moved here, the one thing I said for the place that I moved. Was because I worked from home, was that good internet service was a non-negotiable for me. And for you to somehow imply that I don't take it in seriously as you do, because I made that a non-negotiable when I bought my house. I really resent that, and I I stand up for working families all the time, but at the end of the day, someone's gotta pay for this.
My point was that I wanted to state my direct experience from this weekend, and. I get my internet off of something hanging in a tree, and. I get my landline service from copper wire in the ground, which means this past weekend with one thunderstorm, I had nothing. And when I say aye, I mean everyone who lives around me, that was my only point. So what I'm, what I'm trying to explain is that, what I'm trying to explain is Mister Carr made a very good point about rural electrification. And right now, the people, many of the people I represent, many of the people you represent are grossly unserved. So I just don't want to get lost in the weeds here, we have something significant we need to accomplish, that was my only point, and it wasn't personal.
We have not gone, um, we're not beyond our time yet, we have seven minutes, so if we are going to not vote this evening, which I understand. Um, several do not want to, we have to make a date and a time, and I assume we'll just recess until that time as well. Yes.
Uh, this courtroom is being used on the seventh and ninth, seventh, uh.
Well, I I'll just want, I just wanna say for the record, when I lived in rural northeast Georgia, I backed up to three hundred acres of forest service. And I had a little wireless modem that hung off the side of my computer, that was very, very challenging to work from. So I understand very well the challenges of families trying to work from home and children trying to do schoolwork from home. And hear from it consistently from my constituents, I appreciate the point that you are trying to make, but I don't think trying to make it personal is constructive in the least.
This past weekend, outages were caused by storm damage, this meeting will be adjourned in six minutes.
I would like to make a motion that we meet, or, yes, that we meet on the eighth at six o'clock in the courtroom. In Gay Street, whatever we have to say, um, to finalize our decision and vote, um. On.
This, he said he need to know on the eighth, so I don't know if meeting at six o'clock on the eighth is gonna do it.
Eighth runs till midnight.
Maybe, it depends on if it's end of day, or if it's, or if it's the sixth.
Why don't we meet, uh, on the sixth, Labor Day, the, at the end of the day?
I I work all day on Labor Day.
We can find on Labor Day.
I mean, I gotta, I'll be, I'll be vailing hay, but I mean, at the end of the day, I'll be finished.
Only way we wouldn't.
If the public has plans to be somewhere on Labor Day, I think they would not like that.
It's later, if it's seven o'clock, I imagine court will be well over on the seventh.
On the seventh?
On the seventh.
Let's do it on the seventh, the seven.
Seven o'clock, okay, amend my motion, we'll meet on the seventh.
So you're gonna continue these joint, this joint meeting to the seventh, September seventh, twenty twenty one. At seven P M in the Rappahannock County courthouse. Two fifty, Gay Street.
Are we gonna meet as, uh, two boards or as one board?
I, you might as well just do both boards.
Both boards, just like we are right now, and are we gonna invite the, uh, the, our attorney to join us?
She is currently asking.
I think we should, but I think we should have a period of, uh, at least a resolution in case we wanna go into closed session. Because we're discussing public business that has money.
I've been told that we cannot go in a closed session.
Who told you that?
Miss Pandict did.
But I don't believe that, I believe she may be mistaken because we are talking about the expenditure of public funds.
Is she on, actually, we've got a vote on this.
We're talking about the expenditure of public funds, Miss Pandict.
I I understand what you're talking about, that particularly question relates to bargaining power on the expenditure of public. Funds and protection of that bargaining power, and the bargaining power would really be with all points broadband. Not, not, uh, any internal contracts, so I have some concern about that, I, I had indicated to the chair that I would. Speak with Mister Goff, and I will do that if there's a desire for closed meeting to occur, there may be some other aspects. Of, uh, matters, including the provision of legal advice which could qualify for closed meeting. But the, uh, proposal for closed meeting that I had winged up with respect to this meeting, in my mind. Uh, was too, uh, marginal to qualify, um. Secondly, I, as I told Chair Donahue, I have to be, uh, in another meeting. For another locality where I'm acting attorney at seven o'clock on that Tuesday. I have two other meetings with different localities that may infringe on that, a lot of which. Uh, theoretically won't, but, um, it appears everybody like you all wants to get back to doing official business on Tuesday. And I can't be in all of those places. So if you start, um, at seven on this particular issue, it is very unlikely that I can be available.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we need a vote. Um, we have a motion to, uh, recess until the seventh, I think Mister Curry stated everything accurately, I need a second.
Seventh to seven.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
We have a second, any discussion?
Did I just hear she's not available?
She did.
She's not gonna be available, but we're gonna meet anyway.
We have a motion and a second.
So, so why was she here tonight, if she's not gonna be here on the seventh?
Think has a point he's scheduled, as he needs to make.
I didn't hear the motion, are you all recessing immediately?
Continuing in this meeting to September seventh.
So just in terms of process and procedure, can I ask a question about, um?
Very quickly.
Very quickly.
Sorry, um, so the intention would be for. This body, these bodies, to make a decision on this date about. A, continuing under the MOU, and B, submitting a Vaddy grant application, and C, if so. What the level of local match would be. Okay.
Correct.
And so I would just, I should say, um. We've given you two points on that, I think option B is pretty close to, uh, the far end of the spectrum. About what we guess is gonna be competitive this year in terms of an application.
Good.
Thank you.
So the two point nine million from us is what you think is. What we'd need to do.
We have a motion and a second, and I don't have time.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.